Please rise for the, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. So I will call the August 7th, 2024 Select Board Meeting to Order. We have no changes to the, well, one change to the agenda. There's some additional announcements. And other than that, I will turn it over to Erica for announcements.
Thank you. The Select Board Meeting is being audio and video recorded. We have two additional announcements tonight that are public outreach announcements. Let me just share the screen. Both of these public outreach sessions will occur on Wednesday, August 14th. The first one is the Lily Pond Restoration Project. That is going to occur between 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. at the Sewer Department Meeting Room at 81 Selshore Road. The second announcement is the Surfside Area Transportation Improvements Project, which is, that includes Lover's Lane, Orkwa Boulevard, not Boulevard, but Monahansett. That is going to be in this room next Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. and by Zoom. There are the QR codes here and there's handouts in the room and this information will be online as well. And then we have a video that our Communications Office worked on that they wanted to show.
Hello, my name is Brooke Moore and I'm the current Chair of the Nantucket Select Board and a proud member of our community of approximately 15,000 residents. I'm asking you today to please support our effort to secure an exemption from the NOAA North Atlantic Right Whale Vessel Strike Reduction Rules that are currently being reviewed.
The proposed NOAA North Atlantic Right Whale Vessel Strike Reduction Rule has the potential to devastate our island. If adopted as it stands, it would eliminate fast ferry services for more than half the year and severely limit essential freight and vehicle transport.
We lose more than just transportation. We lose access to medical care, essential supplies, and our crucial link to the mainland.
Our local economy, which relies heavily on tourism and daily commuters from Cayman Islands, could take the hit of over $100 million. That would be a disaster for our small businesses and families.
Our youth athletes and sports teams depend on the fast boats to attend hundreds of island games and events. Without these ferries, scheduling and transportation would make competing nearly impossible.
Nantucket is an environmental justice community. This rule would hit our underserved and economically disadvantaged communities the hardest, limiting access to critical resources and opportunities.
As a college student, knowing that I have the option to come home for the weekend and make it back in time for class on Monday is crucial to my well-being.
We're already physically isolated and this rule would only isolate us further.
We urge you to join us in requesting that NOAA exempts Nantucket Sound from this rule. Please take action today by emailing your representatives. Our island's future depends on it.
And I just want to thank our Communications Department and the various staff members who helped do the voices in there. That was really great. Our next announcement is the applications received for the Committee vacancies, round two. Just going to go through those real quick. Capital Program Committee, we have one seat available and two applicants, Peter Kaiser and Joe Plandowski. Council for Human Services, one seat available and zero applicants. I would urge people to submit your name if you're interested in that. Council on Aging, two seats available and one applicant, Arlene O'Reilly. Cultural Council, two seats available and one applicant, Jack Bulger. Nantucket Historical Commission, two seats available and three applicants, Linda Williams, Diane Coombs, and Sarah Noel McLean. The Real Estate Assessment Committee, two seats available and one applicant, Thomas Barada. The Scholarship Committee, three seats available and two applicants, Jackie McGrady and Anne Brotes. And again, for those seats that still don't have enough applicants for seats available, if you're interested, you can email me or call our Town Administration Office. And then we have the Conservation Commission vacancy. We have one seat available and let me just pull that up. And the timeline is that applications are due on Wednesday, August 16th at noon. And then we will announce those applicants at our August 21st and September 11th meetings because of the summer holidays. That's why it's spread out and the applicants can introduce themselves and review their applications at the September 25th meeting, at which time the appointment will be made. And there is no Select Board Meeting next Wednesday, August 14th, due to the summer schedule. And I'll turn the other to you.
Any other Select Board announcements or comments? I'm going to, I'm going to steal Julian's thunder a little bit on one thing because I've asked him to live in his comments tonight on Vineyard Wind. But he's here in part today because in this legislative session, they were able to secure a sunset on PFAS in firefighting gear in the state of Massachusetts in 2027, which has been hard fought battle by a number, Nantucket's been on the leading edge of this. And Ayesha, if she's still here, that group has really done a great job of lobbying up at the State House for this to happen. So thanks to Julian and that group for getting this passed to protect our firefighters and hopefully other states will follow and the manufacturers will come along with PFAS-free gear for firefighters nationwide and worldwide. So thanks to you, Julian, for that. Any other Select Board announcements or comments? Okay, seeing none. We don't have any follow-up comments from prior Select Board Meetings. Now is the opportunity for a public comment for items not on the agenda. Anyone in the room looking to make a public comment for items not on the agenda? If not, I have Megan Perry's hand up online.
Is that okay for me to speak, Brooke?
Sure, go ahead, Megan.
Excellent, thank you. I just wanted to give a huge shout out to the PFAS Action Group for hosting the presentation that they did on PFAS and bringing in some of the world's leading specialists in PFAS, including Dr. Kyla Bennett, Eric Olson, and Graham Peaslee, along with whistleblower and Kristin Mello, who is a chemist. I wanted to highlight a few members of our community who have taken it upon themselves to show our community their own personal struggle with PFAS, the effects of it and the various cancers that they personally, as a family, have, do most likely to PFAS. I think a huge shout out needs to go to Ayesha and Nate Barber, Ally and Sean Mitchell, Mary Lepri and Matt Peel. These three families have done more for PFAS than anybody else and they share their stories with our community so the rest of us know you're not alone. It's scary, but they're willing to put themselves out there and let the community know that you can come talk, you can come ask these specialists. I would like to highlight that at that presentation, I did want to thank Matt Fee and David Gray for showing up, along with two of the new deputy chief firefighters. And I didn't really see many other town officials there. It was a privilege to have these experts in, not only talking about PFAS, but a question and answer session and then just some time to mingle and chat with them afterwards. It was quite amazing and it was a full room at the Dreamland. So kudos to those guys. I think they really deserve a standing ovation and a lot of credit for what they've done for PFAS and our community. So, thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
Just making sure that we're going to be able to speak. Do the Vineyard Wind update?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next up, I'm going to take minutes, payroll, oh, sorry, no new business. Thank you. Approval of minutes, payroll warrants and treasury warrants. We'll do a motion on those first.
Can I just make a clarification?
Okay.
So I only provided you the July 24th draft minutes, so those should be the only set that gets approved. And I don't know if everybody got an agenda tonight, but there are some contracts that are being stricken. The housing contract for the Lease for Locals program, we realized today that we had it on twice, once as a pending contract and once as an agenda item, so you will do that under the agenda item. And then there are six contracts for our island home with EF and Associates, and those will all be tabled for tonight as well.
Okay, thanks, Erica. So I think I'd take a motion for the first, for numbers one, two, three, with Erica's amendment as to the minutes that are...
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we're going to do pending contracts subject to the changes that Erica just announced and without the contract for NIFRA. Tom's going to recuse on that. So it is the Health and Human Services contract for, hold on.
Is it Interfaith Council?
Interfaith Council, yes, sorry. So a motion to approve pending contracts with, you're just going to recuse on everything?
Oh, I thought you were going to do it first.
Okay, so we'll do, we'll do the one for Interfaith Council. Do I have a motion to approve that one with Tom recused?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then the remaining contracts, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, wow, getting some feedback. Okay, next up is a request from the Town Clerk for approval of the warrant for September 3rd state primary. Do we have any presentation or we, it's just in the packet right?
This is just a regular item that you periodically do when we've got elections happening, so we would just ask for a motion to approve.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Okay, we're on to the Vineyard Wind update. So I'm going to read a little statement that I prepared in terms of how, I'm hoping the organization of this segment of the agenda will go. So, "Tonight's meeting is intended as an opportunity for the Nantucket community to ask questions of state and federal representatives about the turbine blade incident. We have seen participation at our first two meetings on the blade incident by press, individuals, and interest groups from around the Northeast region. I respectfully request that those folks refrain from public comment this evening to keep the focus of the discussion on the direct impact of the incident on Nantucket. Town administration has, just this week, reviewed all of the emails received and scrubbed the two Select Board Meetings to pull a list of questions from the community to date on this issue. And we're working on an FAQ page on the website that will have all of those answered, in part answers we've already got, ones we will hear tonight and going forward, and that will remain updated." And tonight, for those of you who have public questions, when we take them, I would appreciate that you follow up with an email. It just makes it a lot easier for us to keep that FAQ page updated and corrected over time. So email, email them in would be great. I feel really loud. Okay, so, and that should go to communications@nantucket-ma.gov, so that's Florencia Rulo's Department. Okay, so tonight we have representatives from the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, Bohem, the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement, BESI, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. They are here to speak on their areas of expertise and responsibility relative to the planning permitting and the management of the Vineyard Wind project and how they relate to the blade failure incident. Rather than introducing everyone in advance, I'll ask each speaker to introduce themselves briefly as they come to the mic or unmute themselves to answer a question. Also here tonight are representatives from the Massachusetts Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, who have been invited in their capacity as our partners in the management of our marine environment. They will be focusing on questions of risks to human health and safety and impacts on our shellfish and aquatic marine life. We've been meeting with senior officials from EEA on a nearly daily basis, and they've provided access to a wide variety of scientific experts and have facilitated communication with federal agencies. And I want to express my appreciation for that support. I've learned so much about the depth of the Commonwealth's resources that are made available to us as a municipality I didn't know, and I'm wholly impressed. And thank you to those of you who've traveled here tonight to offer your expertise, all of you. So I'm going to begin by having Senator Seer read a statement and one that he has brought from Rep. Fernandez, who couldn't be here tonight. After that, I'll have federal officials answer a list of questions that have been provided to them. Then I'll follow with comments and questions from the board, and we'll take public questions that relate to matters under the purview of federal agencies represented tonight. So the idea is that we're going to chunk this under areas of purview and responsibility so that the conversation, we're not having a dozen people go, who's got the football on this question? We're going to try to have the federal related questions asked first, and then I'll shift the focus to the work being done on the state level to assess the impacts, again, on human health and our waters and marine life. So, and then the same routine, board comments followed by public questions. So that's sort of the order of business. We want to keep it flowing. We want to try to focus on questions rather than statements. The idea here is for us to learn as much as we can from these folks here who've traveled here to provide us the information that we're all curious about around this incident. So Julian, if you want to start us off, that'd be great, thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the town of Nantucket for its work in addressing, too, and responding to the Vineyard Wind and GE Blade Failure. Select Board Chair Brooke Moore, the entire board, Town Manager Libby Gibson, and the entire town staff should be commended for your display of leadership and calmness through this incident at the busiest time of the year. Manufacturing errors like the ones that led to this disaster are unacceptable, and the lack of communication directly after the blade failure is alarming and grossly substandard for two companies who should be aiming to be good, long-term neighbors with the town and the region. I was notified of the blade failure on Monday evening, July 15th, the same day, around the same time as the town, which was nearly 48 hours after the blade failed and debris began to fall into the ocean. Two days without notice is an unacceptable length of time. It put the town, agencies, and organizations who could support this response in a much more difficult position with this delay. And I am deeply disturbed by this lack of communication on the part of GE and Vineyard Wind and demand that they do better if they want, if they want the support of the town and the state going forward. It is not enough to simply check the box on a response plan. You've got to be a good neighbor. If you're, if you have a tree that might fall in your neighbor's yard, you don't wait till it falls until you call your neighbor and say this may happen. Since the moment that we were notified, I have been, and my office has been, in regular contact with the Nantucket officials as you have navigated this emergency, and we have sought to bring the full resources of the Commonwealth to bear, which Brooke you just spoke about. And in the days that followed the failure, my office and I have been communicating continuously with our congressional delegation, especially Congresswoman Bill Keating, actually who I just saw today and spoke with about this again, as well as relevant federal agencies to understand the cause and failure, and especially the initial lack of communication that ensued. In partnership, we pushed to ensure that there were improved coordination between the federal government, the state, the town, to address the impacts of the incident, especially after a halting start. I'm encouraged that the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement, BESI, has designated a federal liaison officer to ensure prompt and effective communication and coordination between BESI, other involved federal agencies, the state, the town, tribal governments, and all involved. GE and Vineyard Wind must be accountable to the town of Nantucket and all other communities impacted by this failure. The removal of debris must be thorough and absolute. The town of Nantucket must be made whole and then some for all the expenses incurred in response to the blade failure and its cleanup. Federal agencies, Vineyard Wind, GE, and any future parties must have an emergency response plan that considers contingencies for blade failure and its aftermath. The current response plan is based on an oil spill plan that does not meet the unique challenges we are facing with this blade failure. An after-action is also warranted as to why the Barnstable County Regional Emergency Response Committee did not respond immediately on Saturday evening and did not communicate with Nantucket officials as outlined in their response plan. This is supposed to be a 24/7 emergency line, and the breakdown in communication and then subsequent communication with the town of Nantucket must be reviewed. Going forward, you know, it's also, just for some color to this context, the text message I received on Monday evening was, hey, can you send me Libby Gibson's cellphone? Right, that's not acceptable. A good neighbor should have the town manager's cellphone. Going forward, we need an organized response plan that goes beyond just removal of debris. We need protocols that hold companies accountable and strengthen lines of communication across our communities and with the organizations that are supporting the cleanup. So many of us have been proponents of renewable energy, including the proponents of, including the potential of offshore wind because of the existential threat that the climate crisis and rising seas poses to our way of life on Nantucket, on Martha's Vineyard and Cape Cod. New England waters are among the fastest warming and most rapidly rising in the world. But let me be clear, our pursuit of these solutions must be balanced with an unwavering commitment to the communities who host these projects. Offshore wind companies must act as good neighbors. Anything less than full respect and transparency to our local communities is simply unacceptable. Tonight, federal agencies and state agencies are here to provide answers to the town and its residents about the causes and its aftermath of this failure. I am especially appreciative of the state officials and federal officials who have taken the time to be on island to attend this meeting, that it's no easy feat, especially in August. I look forward to hearing from them tonight, both here in the room, and then I'll be listening virtually on the ferry and then ride back to Provincetown. I also want to share a statement from Representative John Fernandez, who could not be with us here this evening, and I'll read Representative Fernandez's statement. Of course, we have been strong partners in representing this island going on eight years. Quote, "I am deeply concerned about the recent failure of the General Electric turbine off the coast of Nantucket. Ensuring the safety and reliability of our renewable energy infrastructure is paramount for the protection of our environment and communities. We need to ensure public and environmental safety, and we are calling for, one, a comprehensive investigation. An investigation must be conducted to determine the cause of the failure and assurances needed, need to be made that it will never happen again. Two, enhance safety protocols. There needs to be a review and enhancement of the safety protocols and maintenance schedules for all offshore wind turbines. Additionally, emergency management plans must be reviewed so that island officials are notified immediately. Lack of timely notification is unacceptable. Three, community engagement. Regular updates must be provided to the public, ensuring transparency and accountability. Four, remediation. General Electric must be held accountable for the damage caused, and there must be a full reimbursement to the town and other impacted parties. Nantucket is a unique island community that must be protected, and more must be done to ensure the health and safety of island residents and the environment." So that is from Representative Fernandez. Of course, we'll continue to stay in close contact. We really view our role here as going to bat for the town and the town's needs, desires, and wishes, and we'll be continuing to work to do that. And then I do, I appreciate the comments on PFAS, but I look forward to coming back. We got some very big wins on housing related to a seasonal community designation. All four of your Article 97 home rules were passed before the end of the session, also not an easy feat, and I anticipate the governor will be signing those in coming day. So more on that later, but just grateful to this board and this town for your tremendous leadership. You continue to have our support, partnership, and whatever resources that we can bring to bear. We will do our very darndest to make that happen.
Thank you, Senator Seer. Appreciate it very much. Okay, so now I'm going to invite the federal delegation that's here to, they've sort of sorted through the questions and identified which agency is going to answer which of the questions. So I'm going to, I've asked them to read the question that we provided and then provide the answer. So, and if everybody, a reminder, just introduce yourself, your title, and let's get started.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and members of the Nantucket community. My name is David Diamond and I serve as the Deputy Chief for Leno operations in Bohem's Office of Renewable Energy Programs, and I do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight along with my other federal colleagues. You specifically referenced the questions that you provided beforehand. We do have, collectively have answers prepared to them since the answers are kind of, I think the answers are going to be split between the different representatives. Our members would suggest do a little bit of brief introduction of myself and about Bohem, then I'll turn it over to BESI and the other federal agencies to do introductions, and then we'll circle back to answer those questions, probably starting with BESI, and then I'll, we'll hand off as necessary for the different agencies to answer.
That sounds good.
That works, great. So by way of introduction, I want to begin by acknowledging the concerns that have arisen following the recent incident with the Vineyard Wind One turbine blade, and I'm here today to provide you with as much clarity and information as possible from a Bohem perspective. For those of you who have not heard of the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, or Bohem, we're the bureau within the Department of the Interior that's responsible for the offshore wind energy leasing process, including conducting environmental and technical reviews prior to issuing leases for offshore wind and then approving any construction operations plans and associated reviews on those submitted by LSEs for proposed offshore wind projects prior to their approval. In this capacity, we work closely with our sister agency, the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement, BESI, which provides the regulatory oversight and enforcement for environmental compliance, inspections, and undertakes investigation of offshore wind activities. Bohem will continue to coordinate closely with BESI, who is the lead federal agency investigating the Vineyard Wind One offshore turbine blade incident. And we're also working closely with our, with our federal partners, including NOAA and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service that are represented here tonight, as well as with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and with the LSE, Vineyard Wind, to review all aspects of our procedures in an effort to determine what changes we can make based on lessons learned that come out of the incident. I do want to ensure that we are committed to transparency throughout this process. We take your concerns seriously, which is why I've traveled here in person today, and our goal tonight is to answer as many questions as possible. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, yeah, BESI.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Sheri Hunter. I'm the BESI, Renewable Energy Operations Director. I'd like to thank the Nantucket Select Board for inviting the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement, also known as BESI, here tonight to share with you some of the actions that have been conducted since the Vineyard Wind incident on July 13th. BESI's mission is to promote safety and protect the environment during offshore energy-related activities on the federal Outer Continental Shelf, the OCS, through regulatory oversight and enforcement. BESI is responsible for overseeing safety and the environmental requirements for offshore wind facility design, fabrication, installation, operation, and decommissioning. Vineyard Wind reported to BESI a blade failure incident on wind turbine generator AW-38, which involved a blade collapsing with multiple pieces falling into the water. Since the incident, BESI has been fully engaged in the response and recovery efforts and has taken the following steps. BESI immediately issued a verbal suspension order to Vineyard Wind One to cease power production from all of its wind turbine generators until it could be determined whether the blade... failure affected any of the other turbines. BESI also issued a verbal preservation order to safeguard any evidence that may be relevant to determining the cause of the incident. Both orders were provided in writing on July 15th, and power production remains suspended. On July 24th, BESI designated a federal liaison officer to support inter-agency efforts and coordination with other federal, state, local, and tribal governments and interested stakeholders. On July 26th, a superseding suspension order was issued, which lists requirements that would have to be met before Vineyard Wind would be able to conduct certain additional activities, but continued to prohibit Vineyard Wind from generating electricity and building additional wind turbine generators. BESI’s renewable energy experts, including engineers and scientists, are evaluating recovery and removal plans to ensure compliance with safety and environmental laws and regulations and the terms and conditions of Vineyard Wind’s construction and operations plan. BESI is also conducting its own comprehensive and independent investigation into the causes and factors contributing to the incident, and will evaluate all information provided to us. Those findings will be released to the public once the investigation is completed. Finally, we are also working with our federal partners, including the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, the Fish and Wildlife Service, the National Marine Fisheries Service of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Agency, and the Environmental Protection Agency, to determine if there are any long-term impacts to the marine environment resulting from the incident. BESI did receive some questions from the board, and I’d like to take a few minutes to address those questions. Question one: What is the status of the planning and execution of the removal of the remainder of the blade? BESI places the safety of the public and all responding crews, wind turbine technicians, et cetera, first and foremost. BESI is onsite in New Bedford, thoroughly evaluating the recovery and related plans, and promoting the safety of the personnel implementing those planned operations by thorough evaluation of risk assessments, confirming regulatory requirements are strictly adhered to, and making sure that Vineyard Wind and GE are complying with all applicable safety, environmental laws and regulations, and again, the terms and conditions of the construction and operation plan. BESI defers to Vineyard Wind and GE for details on their specific plans. Question two: Will Boem and BESI communicate directly with Nantucket officials in a timely manner regarding the process and timing of the restarting of the turbines, so that we may ask questions and be provided detailed information regarding the risks to our community and the local environment? BESI is committed to ensuring notifications are being provided in a timely manner. We will work closely with the state, Vineyard Wind, GE, and other federal entities to ensure coordinated notifications. Question three: Can Vineyard Wind and new wind farms be required by Boem and BESI to draft a plan? BESI is currently exploring requiring a plan, such as a marine debris recovery plan, as a component of the company’s safety management system. Question four: What are the steps and timeline for evaluating the integrity of the remaining blades, both installed and not installed, given the apparent determination that the root cause was a manufacturing deviation? BESI is currently assessing GE’s preliminary root cause analysis and cannot comment on that report right now until we have done our own thorough investigation and assessment. There is no timeline on when the inspections of the remaining blades will be complete. BESI is analyzing all of the data, provided along with our federal partners, and will not allow the project to move forward until we are certain the path forward meets the threshold for safe operations. Again, I want to thank the Nantucket Select Board for inviting us here today to share our, BESI’s role and actions to date. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Stephanie Vellmuse. I’m the Regional Energy Coordinator for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service in the Northeast Region, and the mission of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service is to work with others to conserve, protect, and enhance fish, wildlife, plants, and their habitats for the continuing benefit of the American people. In the context of offshore wind energy development, our role is to ensure that these projects comply with environmental laws such as the Endangered Species Act, the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, and the Bald and Golden Eagle Protection Act. Our responsibilities include assessing potential impacts on wildlife and habitats, providing recommendations to avoid and minimize those impacts, ensuring that appropriate mitigation measures are in place. The Fish and Wildlife Service manages land across 570 national wildlife refuges, including here on Nantucket, and enforces vital wildlife laws. Nantucket is home to multiple federally listed species, including migratory birds, beetles, and plants, and we are responsible for their protection. Along with the National Marine Fisheries Service, we consult with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management on offshore wind projects under Section 7 of the Endangered Species Act. This includes emergency consultations, such as the one that was triggered by the recent turbine blade incident. The emergency consultation process allows for immediate emergency response and cleanup activities where life or property are at risk, while also receiving the technical assistance from the Fish and Wildlife Service that is necessary to protect listed species that may be impacted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Nantucket Select Board for the invitation to be here this evening. My name is Andy Lipsky, and I’m the Chief of the Offshore Wind Ecology Branch at NOAA Fisheries, also known as National Marine Fisheries Service. I work out of our Narragansett Lab in Rhode Island, and we have labs in Woods Hole, Massachusetts, Milford, Connecticut, Orano, Maine, and Sandy Hook, New Jersey. NOAA Fisheries is committed to a strong legal, regulatory, and scientific foundation to support offshore wind as a new and growing use of our marine waters. We know the waters of Nantucket are notable cultural and historic importance. They carry high marine biodiversity. These are important foraging areas for critical species like the North Atlantic right whale or leatherback sea turtles that use these areas, and they sustain commercial recreational fisheries that are important to this region and important for our food security systems. And it’s also waters that support lively tourism industry. And as a lifetime resident of Massachusetts and Rhode Island, I appreciate how the Nantucket community values everything about this island, and I acknowledge the disappointment and strong sentiment that has been expressed associated with the blade debris incident. NOAA is committed to working with Boem and our federal agencies, state agencies, tribal leaders, ocean users, and coastal communities to advance wind energy while protecting marine biodiversity and promoting ocean co-use. I’d like to start with a bit of context. As we are the lead federal living marine resource agency, our role is primarily to provide expertise and advice on living marine resources to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and to BESI through our consultation and our coordination. As you heard before, Boem and BESI is the lead federal agency for the siting, leasing, and permitting of offshore wind energy, and BESI is the lead for the safety and enforcement. My agency, NOAA Fisheries, engages with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management on environmental reviews and permitting processes for offshore wind projects to address fisheries issues, marine mammal issues, threatened endangered species issues such as whales, sea turtles, and sturgeon, and we do this through a number of authorities: the National Environmental Policy Act, the Marine Mammal Protection Act, the Endangered Species Act, the Magnus and Stevens Act, and the Fish and Wildlife Coordination Act. In service to our stewardship responsibilities for living marine resources and their habitats, we also work collaboratively to advance the science in order to better understand the interactions of offshore wind on our trust resources. And our trust resources include the fish, the marine mammals, protected species, the habitats, the ecosystems, but also the human elements and the social and human dimensions, such as fishing communities. Specific to this incident, NIMPs is not authorizing, permitting, or carrying out marine debris or other response operations. Our role is limited to providing technical assistance and recommendations specific to avoiding impacts on our trust resources. In addition to participating in meetings coordinated by Boem and BESI, we have also provided advisory recommendations to Vineyard Wind and to GE to minimize effects from the response, but also to better understand the debris incidence impacts on our trust resources. We provided a letter to GE and Vineyard Wind last week. That letter is publicly available. For the interest of time, I won’t go through all the elements, but if you have questions on the type of monitoring that we’ve recommended, both during the incident, post-incident, and then long-term, those are all outlined in that letter, which we can share with you. In addition, on July 31st, Boem requested NOAA Fisheries to initiate an emergency consultation under the Endangered Species Act, and we are currently engaged in that consultation with Boem. As part of that consultation, we provided Boem with recommendations to minimize the effects of the response operations on our trust resources, threatened endangered marine species. The consultation will evaluate the effects of the emergency response activities on those listed species. That consultation is ongoing during the emergency response action. NOAA will continue to support the inter-agency response to this incident in providing our expertise and advice and data to ensure it is a successful operation and that we can understand the impacts associated with the event. As my expertise really focuses on NOAA’s science, research, and data collections, I’m happy to bring back any specific questions concerning environmental reviews or regulatory responsibilities and other questions or roles from other NOAA agencies. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned before, I’ll go ahead and follow up and provide with a Boem perspective on, to, arguments, the answers that Bessie provided to those questions. I think Bessie covered some of the questions that were clearly within their role, but some of them were questions either for Boem or where they were kind of joint Boem and Bessie responsibilities. So, one question that was jointly Boem and Bessie is it concerned whether Vineyard Wind has a written emergency response plan that covers an incident of this kind. Wanted to point out that Boem’s approval of Vineyard Wind’s construction operations plan or COP, it included several conditions that do apply to the incident. Condition 3.1.5 was a requirement for an emergency response plan, and that response plan does address non-routine events. It does say oil spills, major storms, or collisions with ships, among other things, but it does, that would cover an unplanned incident, including the blade failure that occurred as well. Also wanted to draw your attention to condition 5.1.3, which is a requirement for marine debris awareness and elimination, and that requires the LESI to describe the specific actions they will take when marine debris is involved in an incident, including notification, recovery, and reporting requirements, and specifically under that condition, 5.1.3.4 is for marine debris recovery and prevention, and that required the LESI to recover marine trash and debris that is lost or discarded in the marine environment or performing OCX or Outer Continental Shelf activities, such as when such incident is likely to cause undue harm or damage to natural resources or significantly interfere with OCS uses. So those, from our perspective, those conditions do, were in the construction operations plan conditions of approval, and they do apply to this incident. And Vineyard Wind did develop an emergency response plan and consulted with the Coast Guard on specific events that would be covered, and that was reviewed by BESI, which concurred with the plan, on the plan that was submitted by the LESI. I’m happy to go into more detail with follow-up questions about construction operations plans and our review and approval process, if you’d like to do that later on. And a construction operations plan and all the terms and conditions, they are available on, they are publicly available on Boem’s website, and I’m happy to point you to where to find those as well. Other question is, was the blade failure considered as a risk in the permitting process? Boem does conduct numerous reviews throughout the process, including improving a construction operations plan, and this includes both an environmental and a technical review, and the reviews cannot identify every possible scenario, but the environmental review does evaluate the potential for environmental impacts that could result from the proposed action of construction operation of the wind farm. The technical review seeks to determine if the activities will be conducted in a safe manner, and the facility will be designed to current industry standards using best engineering practices. The environmental impacts of a blade failure were within the scope of the environmental reviews and mentioned in the environmental impact statement. Additionally, Boem reviews and approves a certified verification agent, which is an independent third-party responsible for verifying that the project is designed, fabricated, and installed according to industry codes and standards using best available practices. And DNV is the company that is the certified verification agent for Vineyard Wind, and in that capacity, they were responsible for reviewing the design of all project components, including the blades, and the CVA submits an evaluation report to BESI that documents their verification of the design. So that was all done as part of approval and following the approval of the construction operations plan. The other questions was, can Vineyard Wind or new wind farms be required by Boem and BESI to draft other plans, such as Ms. Hunter mentioned? And Boem’s existing COP approval condition, 3.1.5, which I mentioned, the emergency response plan, it does generally cover an incident involving marine debris release. However, Boem and BESI are, we are reviewing all procedures and trying to determine how we can strengthen and build upon that TNC and other TNCs to, based on the lessons learned from this incident. We will continue to do so during the response recovery and afterwards. Another question was, how can affected and potentially affected communities and constituencies be assured of participation in the process to ensure that our needs and risks are considered? And Boem has the authority to identify procedures and set standards for plans as required as part of the construction operations plan approval conditions, and when we’re reviewing and approving construction operations plans, Boem seeks to engage early and often with stakeholders and communities, and we will explore additional opportunities to allow for their input on the development of response plans before COP approvals. And I believe those were the questions that we specifically felt were Boem equities there, and happy to follow up and on, with you on any follow-up questions you may have or members of the public may have.
Thank you. Does that cover everything from your guys’ end? Okay, terrific. So now I’m going to ask if the board has any additional questions or comments they’d like to make before I open it up to the public on issues related to the federal purview. Anybody?
A few. I don’t even know where to start.
Okay.
Well, you go, Malcolm.
Okay, you ready? You said a minute. Ready now? Go ahead.
I want to make sure these are questions, not comments. So.
I did say questions.
You talk about industry standards. This whole industry is a relatively new industry, so it would appear to me that perhaps the standards aren’t really set yet. That’s kind of a comment and a question. Is that correct? Or, I mean, how do we define industry standards?
So, the offshore wind has been in existence for about 20 years or so. There’s a lot of international standards related to various components of all the aspects of the turbine. There are type certifications that are issued by various certification bodies. There are component certifications for each of the elements of the facility. The certified verification agent that Mr. Diamond referred to is responsible for the overall project’s verification that the various type certificates have been reviewed, and they are also very specific to the turbine that is being analyzed for the particular situation in which it’s being used. So there is an So, there's an extensive review process that involves many standards set by international electric, IEC standards, and all various types of standards bodies. Does that address?
Yeah, but am I correct? Am I correct? But this type of blade is a relatively new blade, so are there a lot of standards for it? Am I correct or not?
So, the type certificate on the, I apologize, we were making sure I understood the question, but I might defer to GE to speak to the process on their certification.
Mr. Martella, are you...
Thank you very much for the question. The blade design is not a new design. It's something that's been well-established in the industry, the design that's an evolution of onshore technology, offshore technology, and an application that has been certified, as Director Hunter pointed out, through these international certification organizations. I think to your question, the Haliot X220 is a relatively new application of this design. It's 107 meters. It's being used in the offshore wind context. We're using it in Doggo Bank. We're using it in Vineyard Wind. So, this specific blade, I would agree, is relatively new in its application, but based on a long history of design and established designs, which is a standard for the industry through the certification process.
All right. Well, I understand, but again, it's still a relatively new blade, and we all have history of other mechanical devices that are relatively new and are built by standards and fail. The other question is, again, a comment for NOAA. You talked a lot about minimizing effects on our species. You never really talk about preventing them. Is, I mean, again, please educate me.
Yeah.
It goes back to standards, yeah.
Absolutely. Again, our role is from providing expertise and consultative and advice to Bureau of Ocean Energy Management as the lead decision-maker, and of course, avoidance is always, you know, avoid, minimize, and mitigate, you know, following that sort of federal sequencing process. So, avoiding impacts is always the first, the first place we go in terms of providing recommendations for our trust resources, avoiding impacts to protected species, avoiding impacts to fisheries, avoiding impacts to fishing communities.
So, one way of avoiding this would have not had the wind farm in the first place, and then we wouldn't even be here to talk about potential effects and environmental effects and all of this. So, because in some cases, when you're talking about speed of ferries, you're trying to avoid something. So, I'm just, I just want to make sure we're consistent. Thank you.
Matt?
I'm sort of a little bit along that lines, is, is there a level, like sort of on these standards, is there a level, is there an accepted level of failure for the very, you know, for the turbine blades? Is there acceptable level of failure for the, you know, sort of the, you know, the insides, for the insides of them, for the, those parts, you know, is there, like, all these standards, is there, is there an acceptable level that you know a certain amount is going to happen, but it's built in, or is there supposed to be no issues? And that's number one. And then number two is, what if we find, what is the level that we find that there's a threshold, you know, that NOAA or someone can accept? Was there, in these discussions, is there a level of harm or a level of risk that wasn't acceptable, and what changes did you make to make it acceptable? You know, like, was that discussion? Or was this a discussion of, this is something we need to do, therefore, we'll do it and we'll figure it out? Or, this is something we need to, you know, we're going to do, and these are the levels of acceptable risk that we've allowed? Does that make, do you understand my question? Because I feel as though, I kind of feel, and the other thing, just a general comment, is I feel also sometimes, you guys have heard me here say, who's the boss? Who owns this? Sometimes when, like, I walk in my bakery and everyone goes, everyone's in charge, no one's in charge. And sometime, I feel like, in this case, I feel like sometimes I have a hard time figuring out, you know, who do we talk to? Who's going to keep us safe? Which part of the government is, you know, who is the responsible boss here? Who's the person that will make the hard decision if there has to be one, one way or the other? So, those are kind of like three questions, like, who do we ultimately go to, you know, as a community when something happens? And I, sort of growing up, if something is, I'm kind of rambling, I'm sorry, but it feels like, I always tell my kids, they're grown now, when you get a warning, you get like, and if you ignore it, it doesn't go away, it just comes back and it's worse. And I feel like this is kind of a warning to us and to you guys, and so how do we ensure that we don't ignore it? So, those are like four questions. Sorry.
Well, I was going to, thanks. Appreciate the questions. I was going to speak specifically to your question about who's responsible within the federal family. So, I think those, there are different responsibilities at different times throughout the lifecycle of the project. As I mentioned, BOM is the lead federal agency for offshore wind permitting and construction operations plan approval. So, we're responsible for the decisions when we're considering what areas to lease, for awarding leases, what companies are qualified for leases, for approving all the initial site assessment, and ultimately approving and coordinating with other federal agencies to approve for their permits when we're approving construction operations plans. Once construction operations plans are approved and we move to the construction phase, we still are responsible as the leaseholder, but we also, the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement has responsibilities for safety and enforcement actions and safety response for wind farms, and I'll defer to Bessie to talk more about their responsibilities. And then also, BOM is responsible for the emergency consultation, we're the lead for the emergency consultations under the Endangered Species Act that my colleague from NOAA mentioned, and we're coordinating closely with NOAA and Fish and Wildlife Service on emergency consultations to understand the environmental impacts and mitigate them, both during the recovery and ultimately during the follow-on response efforts.
Don or Tom?
I think there's, I had about three or four questions. I think they're kind of teeing them up.
Okay.
Yeah, what's the, one was acceptable level? Is there acceptable level of, you know, of blade failure or pollution or, you know, how is that determined?
I will address the safety aspect, since that is the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement. So, we have assembled a team of technical experts, engineers, safety, risk safety, process safety, experts, and we conduct really robust analysis of the facility design report, fabrication installation report. We mentioned the CVA earlier, independent third-party to mitigate the risks that are inherent in energy production. We are coordinating with global experts, as well as utilizing our internal expertise for overseeing energy production for decades related to oil and gas. So, we bring to the table a significant amount. There is, we're passionate about safety of the workforce that is out there, so we want to minimize every risk that we can. We do the reviews of the facilities themselves, keeping in mind safety, protection of the environment. I don't know if that is getting close, but we are staffed with experts in these different areas. We will absolutely take home all the lessons learned from this incident. We are going to gain a lot from this investigation that we are doing, and we will work, we work very closely with the industry when they submit plans. We have bi-weekly meetings. We are in constant contact to understand the processes and procedures that are in place.
It's all right.
So, I think, I'm going to resummarize the question that really Matt, I think, is trying to get at. Is there a point in time, is this, you know, offshore wind at all cost, or what is, what is ultimately the threshold of cost that's unacceptable? And...
Yeah, like, are there trigger points in the planning for this, in the evaluation of this, where the, you know, are there trigger points? Are there points where you go, geez, we can't really risk that, we can't go that far, let's do this? I mean, or, like, I just, I kind of, anyway, I'm trying to say it, I'm fairly simple. I'm trying to say it simply and having trouble.
May I? I'm going to let Mr. Diamond...
Yeah, no, well, I think, again, from a BOM perspective, for our responsibility in the planning and the permitting and approval process, I mean, we, I mean, yeah, there are multiple decision points, and they look at various, like, environmental impacts and potential mitigations, and we look at that when we're deciding what areas to lease, what are the potential, what areas have the highest environmental, the potential for environmental impacts, balancing that with the purpose and need, which is state and federal offshore energy goals and the offshore wind benefits. And we look at that during the leasing process. There's detailed analyses and decision points. We look at that before we approve site assessment plans for LSEs to go forward and do initial site assessment on the lease, and then we have a multi-year review process for actual construction operations plans once they're submitted, and that does include the environmental analysis under NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, and that's done in close coordination with other federals and with other federal partners, and that's where we look at the environmental impact and decide exactly what the, and that's where we balance some degree of, I don't know if you'd characterize it as risk, but potential impacts. And we do look at the no-action alternative, which includes what would happen if we didn't build the projects, what would the impact be to that, both to the actual site and from if the energy was, if that energy wasn't available. And based on that, there's a, that's, there's a decision as to whether to go forward with approving the construction operations plan, I think, and that's based on the construction operations plan that's submitted, and then following that approval, there's the detailed analysis by the certified verification agent, and that's, and based on their assessment, then there'll be a non-concurrence with the, or, we'll be satisfied with those reviews and allow those to go forward, and allow the project to go forward, although I'll defer to Bessie because they'll be the final, they'll be the ones who review the certified verification agent reports on the, on the actual designs that Ms. Hunter mentioned. I hope that provides more of an answer to your question there.
Okay. Don?
Before you sit down, I think that there's a lot of discussion about sort of the approval process to how we got here, but I think what we're looking for and the community's looking for is, what about right now, now that this incident has occurred? What would, how long is it shut down for? What are the things that are going to be necessary for it to go back into construction? Who's going to make that decision? And who would have the authority, or what language in the lease would allow the project to be stopped completely?
So, since, yeah, I'll defer to Bessie because they are the lead agency for the response, and they did issue the suspension of, the suspension order that was mentioned. So, I'll defer to Bessie on that.
So, Bessie issued on a verbal suspension of all operations and activities, as we mentioned, on July 14th, and a written one on July 15th, and again, another one, a superseding suspension order on July 26th. So, Bessie, in collaboration with our federal partners, because it's an extensive federal input here, will, we make, there's certain requirements in the suspension order that must be met for stage. So, for example, on the first, the current suspension order, superseding suspension order, we required substantial, very thorough risk assessments on boarding, for example, the other turbines, not AW38, to ensure that the personnel going out there are trained and et cetera, which they all must be anyway, before they perform any of these procedures. So, that each of the suspension orders will list the requirements to start work on each stage. It will be Bessie that decides ultimately when each of these stages have been, the requirements for each stage has been met. Does, no? Does that answer your question?
It partially answers my question, but I think people would really like to know if the project was deemed to be hazardous enough to be shut down. Who makes that decision to stop construction and not build these? Who has the authority?
Did you, my colleague, Sung Kim, do you... We review all of the documentation, and if it is, and with the certifications that we mentioned earlier, I don't want to beat that dead horse, and if they're in compliance with the terms and conditions of the COP. And the terms and conditions of the construction operation plan are, there's input from many federal agencies, Bessie, the Coast Guard, our colleagues here, and what Bessie does is enforce that those terms and conditions that result from all of those mitigations are met. So, we are not the permitting agency, but we enforce all of the terms and conditions that are required of the LSE, in addition to making sure laws and regulations and lease stipulations are adhered to. So, as long as they're in compliance, the project goes forward. If we detect a non-compliance, we have a variety of enforcement tools. We can issue a notice of non-compliance. We can issue several penalties. We can issue a stop, a suspension, like we did in this case. So, as long as they're in compliance with all of the conditions that were put on the project, they move forward. If there's a non-compliance, depending on the severity, we have a pretty substantial toolbox in Bessie for enforcement.
Hello, my name is Sung Kim. I'm with the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement as well. I think to your question, Bessie does have the authority to stop construction if there are unsafe conditions. A couple of other things, just to kind of point out, is that, you know, we do take the regulatory responsibilities seriously, and we'll make sure to take those lessons learned to implement the improved processes and protocols to ensure that the offshore renewable energy program is conducted safely and with vigorous environmental controls. I think the other piece that Ms. Hunter was speaking to is regarding our penalties and enforcement actions, and to your question of, you know, Bessie, as we're conducting our own independent investigation into the causes and the factors of what's contributed to the incident, Bessie oversees and enforces the regulations to promote safety and protect the environment, and based on the severity of the violations, Bessie has a variety of those tools to be able to enforce the regulations, like Ms. Hunter had said, the notice of non-compliance to civil penalties, to even referrals to criminal investigation. And then also to Mr. Fee, to your question regarding some of the acceptance of the failure, I did just want to point out that there's actually, there's not an acceptable level of failure. And so, as we're finding out more of the root cause analysis from the preliminary RCA that was done, we'll ensure to minimize those risks going forward, but there's more information to come in that space, but I know that that was a question that you had, so just wanted to circle back on that. Thank you.
I'm going to give Tom a sec. Malcolm. Malcolm, Tom, do you have anything?
Yeah, she just touched, from Bessie, just touched on kind of what my question for Mr. Martella was, which was, Mr. Martella, you updated us two weeks ago that part of the root cause analysis was going through the data of like an ultrasound-type capturing device that was made, that were made for all the blades through the manufacturing process. And I was going to ask you for an update on that, but on Bessie's side, I would imagine that part of the stop work order, or the cease and desist, if you will, is to further that investigation through GE. So I kind of just want to make sure, like if there was an update, and to make sure that you guys are on the same page with that.
Yeah, no, we absolutely are. We've been working with GE regarding the information for their data that they're providing in the root cause analysis. Like we had mentioned before, we're doing our own independent investigation as well. And so as that is being undertaken, the preservation order spoke to that. It said that we needed to ensure the security of all of the evidence and the material for our own comprehensive and independent investigation. So even though that root cause analysis is being provided by GE and has been a preliminary RCA that's been provided, our ongoing investigation is going to be able to review some of that data and that information as well.
Yeah, well, I still, so essentially, if you go through all the criteria that they have to, to go back online, is there any point where there's a review where someone says, or are there predetermined criteria that would say, this is just not safe to continue, period? Is there a yes or no answer to that? In other words, you've found the cause, everything looks safe, will there be a point where you'll say, okay, we had an accident? Is this enough to say that we're not going to let the facility continue? Does that ever happen? Or is there any criteria established to make that decision?
Yeah, so in the leasing, in our regulations, both Boem and Bessie have the ability to issue lease suspensions for different reasons. Our regulations do speak to different reasons under which Boem does have authorities to suspend or cancel leases. I don't, I would have to follow up with, and can provide the wording on specifically what those criteria are and what those are allowed. But we do, I mean, there are regulatory authorities to suspend leases. And Boem can also require updates to construction operations plans and include new terms and conditions for those construction operations plans when we approve those revisions. So we do have tools in our toolbox as well to change requirements for the lessee in response to activities that occur, such as an incident like this. So I'm not sure that answers your question completely, but that's kind of speaking to our broad authorities.
You've got a tough job, and so, you know.
Sure. Thank you.
So if the board is okay for the moment, I'm going to, I'm going to open to public comment. I'm going to remind everybody, I know there's some folks online who I know are not from Nantucket, who represent media from off island. Some of you, I know who, that you are, and we're going to skip over you to keep the questions and comments as local as possible. I just want to make one final thought, and I think it, Mr. Diamond, your comment about revising the requirements in the safety plans. I think I and the board and the entire community would like to know if and when there are revisions to those safety plans and requirements in the current lease, and to be apprised of them and maybe, I don't know, have an input into that. And also to know that they are in place before this project goes back online, or if they're not going to be required before the project goes back online. Because I think our community wants to know that there is a concrete response to what happened before this project moves forward, if it, you know, assuming it is. And you don't really need to answer me, it's more of a statement than a question, a request.
Yeah, I just will note that anytime there's a change to, that the construction operations plans and conditions of COP approval, those are all publicly available. We do post those to our website.
Okay, I'm talking about communicating transparently to the community that was affected by this, not posting it online in the normal way you do. I'm talking about direct communication with the island that took the brunt of this incident. So just, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So Val, if you want to, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. This is a whole new industry, and it's being proposed around our entire country. So I feel the folks who are put in the position to answer the questions can't because it's never been done before. And so we're learning as we go, and that has been said before. My main comments were going to be for our senator, but I see his interest, as usual, is not in helping Nantucket, and he has left. So he didn't care enough to come when it happened, and anyway.
Val, can you bring the mic?
Oh, sorry. Bring the mic down.
Our state government is in an all-on push for this, regardless of what the outcome is. They have set these lofty goals and really don't know what is going to happen. And it's evident by all of the agency speak that we get. And, you know, I've been following this for six years, as you know, in court, because I feel like there's thousands of pages of information with no answers. And that's all we've been asking for all the way through. So I think this is a real eye-opener for us, and I hope we really pay attention and dig our heels in and say, stop, because there are no answers yet. They are going to learn from the mistakes on this project. These turbines have never been built at this size, and no one knows what the end result is going to be. And I, I think that we need to just take a step back, ask all of these agencies to stop until we get real answers, all for energy that's going to give us maybe 1% of what they're hoping to get in the end. And I'm sorry, I was more prepared because I was going to speak to Mr. Seer, but he is not here. So thank you for letting us speak. It's very important to hear our voices, and I hope, as a community, our voices will be heard by the people who are in charge, because they are pushing these through no matter what, whether they work or not. It's a goal, and they're going to see it through. Thank you.
Thanks, Val. Okay. I'm going to ask the folks online to, when we ask you to unmute, to please identify where you're from. Again, I'm going to reiterate, this is an opportunity for the Nantucket community. So Mr. Carroll?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Cliff Carroll. I'm from Barnstable, but I'm also a businessman in Nantucket. I'm a member of the Nantucket Association of Realtors, and I've been doing business in Nantucket for over 40 years. I have two questions. One is for the gentleman from Boem, and the other one is for the gentleman, Mr. Lipsky, from the NOAA Northeast Fisheries Science Center. In the construction plan that the gentleman from Boem mentioned, that was part of the construction operating plan or the emergency response plan, they have a 180-page oil spill fatality chart, or mapping of where the oil was supposed to go. I would say, based on where the debris from this one blade has now shown up, it's pretty much encircled the entire island of Nantucket, it would show that their mapping predictions are basically fatally flawed. So the questions that I have in reference to that are, number one, is that transformer still filled with oil? I believe there's one out there that has about 180,000 gallons of oil on it. What would the response have been in the event that the oil itself hit our shores instead of the pieces of fiberglass? In addition to that, for the gentleman from the National Northeast Fisheries Science Center, in other projects where you have an oil spill fatality chart, it maps out the shoreline and the different resources where it will actually land. Normally, the marine fisheries or NOAA would do a fatality mapping or an inventory of the endangered species, or the shellfish beds, or the resources that would be affected by that oil. Instead of being reactive to the next emergency that happens, is NOAA considering mapping out where and what resources are going to be affected, and what their plan is in the event that it's either an oil or another blade or lightning strike on a turbine? And why aren't they mapping that out and using that in their benefit versus detriment measurement? In Boem, or the Biden administration waived their bonding for the taking down of these projects and to ensure against exactly the type of situation we're up against right now on the island, how are they going to hold the contractor responsible where the Biden administration waived all the bonding on this project? And who holds that? And then in reference to Ms. Hunter from BSE, it sounded to me like all her regulations apply to employees and people working on the project, not to the fishermen or people who are boating in the area. And I would like to know who's responsible for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carroll.
Appreciate the questions. I'll touch on the ones I think were specifically for Boem. There was a question about the oil spill response plan and the oil, like where the oil will go versus the debris. I mean, we, that plan was, that oil spill response plan is specifically for a spill of oil or other types of material. The one that I referenced, the plans that I referenced for the sections and the conditions of COP approval that were most applicable to this was, were actually the emergency response and the marine debris section. So those provided the guidance on this, and they weren't intended to be, to spell out, like, they weren't directly analogous to an oil spill, but they provided, they provide the requirements for marine debris removal and the procedures for a response to an emergency incident. But the oil spill, I guess, the oil spill mapping or where oil will go, that was not intended to cover marine debris or blades. That was specific to an oil spill or the other factors that were covered under this plan. And I know NOAA has done analysis of the blade debris and the predicted paths, and I'll defer to NOAA on that, on anything they want to share on that. I do want to address the question on bonding is, was well, and the financial assurance. Boem did not waive the decommissioning requirements, the financial assurance requirements. The developer had submitted a request that was approved to defer those requirements for a period of time, and that was approved based on a financial analysis of a number of factors, including the fact that there's a power purchase agreement in place and a number of other financial factors I'm not prepared to get into in detail. But we do have the ability to revoke that waiver and demand the financial assurance upfront. We have not done so yet, but that is, as part of that approval of the deferment request, we do reserve the right to request the full financial assurance amount upfront.
Is that under consideration following this incident? Or does this incident have impact on that?
I think it's premature. We'll have to evaluate the outcome of the ongoing response and recovery to, before I'd be able to comment on that.
Okay, thank you. And the other, NOAA?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just respond really quickly to the part of that question related to monitoring potential impacts. And the gentleman was referring to an oil spill. This was not an oil spill. So it's a different process that triggered different responsibilities. Our Office of Response and Restoration really takes the lead in responses like this. They've been providing support for those trajectory models and data. And so they can, they can, I am out of my bounds in going through what responsibilities and how they do that. But from my science side of the house, because I actually asked the same question when I learned about this, is this the same thing as an oil spill? Because they are different, one of the things that we had done, because we were concerned with the interaction of this debris, this debris spill essentially interacting with our trust resources, we made a number of recommendations to Vineyard Wind and GE for monitoring, so we could understand the exposure of species, whether the leatherback sea turtles that we know are foraging in the area, or a number of whale species. So those recommendations for monitoring were done as a, as a recommendation, as, you know, we believe that an effective and essential monitoring program should be established to understand the potential immediate effects of the spill, the effects of the response, and then the long-term impacts as well.
So I'm going to follow up, because it's not yours to answer. You've had, there's been a recommendation from NOAA, who actually makes that a requirement? And it may not be for you to answer.
It would not be for me to answer.
Right. So maybe, maybe.
I did want to thank the caller for his question and clarify that Bessie is responsible for not just the workers on the platforms and facilities themselves, but the public around the platforms and the facilities. Again, we have the authority to stop work if we detect any situations that are unsafe. So that applies to the surrounding area as well. And the oil spill response plan is very in-depth, and, because that was mentioned as well. It has booming strategies, it has oil spill trajectories, it requires that the companies have an OZRO, an oil spill response organization, under contract. So it's a very thorough document. I know that question was asked earlier, too. And I did want to make it clear that Bessie does have the view that there is no acceptable level of risk. Period.
So to the question of NOAA has recommendations in terms of species monitoring, who makes, who turns those recommendations into requirements in this process? Does anyone have an answer to that question?
Yeah, I think, I think some of that will be from the outcome of the emergency consultations under Endangered Species Act, the Section 7 consultations. Any, like, right now, there's mitigation recommendations that were given both to Boem and to the lessee to cover for activities that are ongoing now. But then, the, once the immediate response is complete, we'll also consider, and we have a better idea of what the recovery plan is, and that's been provided, there'll be consultations on the impacts from the recovery plan and any required monitoring or mitigations that come out of that. Could be incorporated into the terms and conditions of COP approval if they were to be modified. So are those, those may be issued under a separate, I think that would be referring, that would probably be what impacts it would have to the endangered species permits. I think those would be questions for either the permitting side of NOAA or for Fish and Wildlife Service, who's, they issued their endangered species permit, too. I don't know if you wanted to comment on that.
Would it be possible for us to see those recommendations?
Yeah.
Your recommendations that Noah had made?
For the monitoring recommendations.
The monitoring recommendations. I'd love to see those. Thank you.
Yeah, to the consultation right now, we are in emergency consultation after we've wrapped up emergency we've wrapped up emergency consultation. So once the incident has been handled, then we will analyze the impacts, if there are any, based on our listed species. And after we've completed consultation, there will be recommendations and requirements based on the analysis of the impacts to the species. And at that point, those requirements, if there are any that are made, we would cede them over to the action agency to incorporate into an updated COP or other type of regulatory document.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Veronica Bonet. Is it better to just say all of the questions at once? Or do we ask the question and then get an answer?
How many questions do you have? Actually, you have, you have three minutes, so just put them out.
I'll just ask them all.
Yep.
Okay. I wanted to point out that sometime before 6:25, Julian Sayer left the room. One of my questions for him was, how can you be independent if you are getting ongoing campaign funding from Vineyard Wind and many of its senior employees? I also wanted to know if he had read all of the project documents for Vineyard Wind. I think he could learn a lot from them and maybe make more accurate statements about the projects if he had done that. And then I also wanted to ask him how he could possibly support the current bill in the Massachusetts legislator, legislation that strips local lawmakers of permitting for energy projects. So local control gone. In fact, I don't even know if we would be having this meeting if that bill were to pass because that, control of that would go completely to the state. For Bessie, when the oil spill drill was conducted in May, did Barnstable notify Nantucket? And I would think that the miscommunication on this certainly could have been anticipated because you did a drill, you bragged about how great it went, but I don't know if you followed up with anyone on Nantucket to see if they had been notified. To the NOAA Fisheries guy, do you have a copy of this letter you're talking about this evening that you could submit so that we could all have it while this is fresh in our minds?
We've, we've asked for that. We just asked for that.
I thought maybe we could have it, like, to read, like, now. That's my question. He said most of his answers are in it, so it would be nice to get. David Diamond gave quite a lot of quick speak about where in the documents pollution events are accounted for. And can you please say where in the construction and operation plan for Vineyard Wind the words "blade failure" is mentioned? I can already answer that question for you. It is nowhere. There is a pollution response plan. In it, it says, if there is a pollution incident, we will follow the oil spill response plan. There was no plan for a major pollution event, and I don't think it's fair for Boem to allude that there was. I've read it thoroughly. For Bessie, do you have your own vessels? And how are you getting out to these wind turbines to do your inspections? Who is collecting the data? Who is doing the monitoring? It's my understanding that the developer is being allowed to self-audit, self-regulate, and self-monitor, and is merely sharing paperwork with Bessie. So if you could clarify that, that would be very helpful.
Veronica, that's it?
Oh, one thing is really important, and you'll want to know.
I'm sorry.
Because for Revolution Wind, which has not been stopped, what are the extra precautions being taken on Revolution Wind at this time?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Do you guys?
Breaking a revolution.
Do you guys want to respond to the question about, a lot of those weren't addressed at you and they were some statements, but I think the question I heard was, who is doing the actual monitoring out at the site? Is it the leaseholder or are you, is it truly independent? I think was the focus of the question.
For pile driving, as an example of a process for pile driving, there are very strict noise thresholds that must be, the sound attenuation can't exceed, et cetera, and those were put in by NOAA and NIMF primarily, I believe, and different, another office in NOAA, too, but NOAA primarily. So there's protected species observers on the boats. There's also data that comes in measuring the sound. So when we get those measurements in from, from the field.
I think the question is, who's supplying the data? Who's collecting and supplying the data to you?
This is, this is a technical question. I wanted to make sure I answer it correctly. So I will get back to the board with the specific entity. But I do know the data is coming in that is independent. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues know the source.
If you're not, if you're not sure of the answer, I would prefer a written response.
I will respond in writing to the board, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want me to answer the GUI question, too? The government, the other question?
Yeah.
On, it was related to the May government-initiated unannounced exercise.
The drill, yeah.
GUI for oil spill preparedness. We are still evaluating the after-action. We will make note, of all the, maybe the notifications that did or did not occur appropriately, that is absolutely being analyzed very, very, very closely. And I think, do we own our own vessels? No, we do not own a vessel. We are, we either, depends on availability with the Coast Guard, or we ride out on the company vessel and reimburse the vessel, reimburse the company for use of their vessel. And then we conduct our own inspections independently on the facilities themselves. And I will get back to the board on the technical issue of exactly how the data.
And the source of the data, and the source of the data. Okay, I'm going to go to Bill Greeter online.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman, for taking my question. Merely, it's a statement rather than a question. I think this whole response has been woefully inadequate by the feds and state agencies and representatives. This incident is far more than a local incident, it's a wake-up call for a national incident. Optics are everything, and none of these alphabet agencies bothered to show up until tonight. So far, each agency has presented a CYA response. It's disturbing, unacceptable, and quite disingenuous. They should be more forthcoming with the answers and what's going on, rather than trying to say, oh, we've done everything correctly. Obviously, they have not done everything correctly, otherwise, we wouldn't be in this pickle. Thank you very much for taking my time.
Thank you, Bill. Amy?
Hi, Amy DiCibio. First, I just want to say, I don't think that the agencies and unfortunately, anybody from the state who's not here now should be fooled by the lack of attendance in this room. There were a lot of people here when this first happened, and this is the height of the season, and the people who live on this island year-round and are the voters here are working, and they're exhausted. So I think it's a shame that it's taken three and a half weeks for you people to get here and bring us a lot of non-answers.
Amy, Amy, it's tradition in Nantucket not to speak directly to others in the room to speak through the chair. Thank you very much.
You're 100% right, I apologize. But I, I think it's a disgrace that Mr. Seer has left and we haven't seen Mr. Fernandez. And as Mr. Fee said earlier, who is in charge? It's unclear who is in charge, and we thank you, and I actually feel very sorry for this select board because this is way beyond the scope of what you should have to be doing. I have a couple of questions. I guess this would go to Bessie. Are the standards regs that you have out there with respect to offshore wind on the Bessie page that deals, on that page that deals with hurricanes, is offshore wind part of the, oops, I'm supposed to look at you, is that part of the, is that part of the protocol? Because we are expecting very big winds coming up here. We answered the question, does Bessie have vessels? Which the answer is no. So I find it very interesting that you're, you mentioned that you're able to detect things. I think that's incredible that we don't have, that you don't have your own vessels. There is no plan for a blade break, as Ms. Bonet said earlier in the COP. So it's, I'd be curious to understand what your thresholds are for the blade break since it's not mentioned anywhere in there. So, and that goes back to questions that you guys had earlier. What is the threshold here for future blade breaks? My understanding from boaters that were out at the site yesterday at AW 38, that there are still pieces hanging from the turbine, lots of pieces still hanging from the turbine, and that there was no one around, not a vessel to be seen, nothing anywhere. So I, again, we are expecting big winds, so does that mean that we're just supposed to keep having trash and debris roll into our beaches and into the water column and into the mouths of the animals that live out there? It seems, you know, that's pretty unacceptable because while everyone's standing, pointing fingers and getting ready for their lawsuits, we are in danger of much more environmental disaster here. And lastly, I have a question about the inspections, and this would go to the GE Vernova people. They talked about their MRI machine, and my understanding is that they are going back to review the scans that they already took of the blade. So to me, that's sort of like looking at somebody's leg the day before, looking at an MRI that was taken the day before they broke their leg and trying to figure out what, how the leg broke. So I think that could tell a part of the story, if there was actually some kind of damage, but that does not tell the whole story.
Okay, Amy.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you. Okay, I can answer, I asked the question about the hurricane, and I had an answer from GE earlier today. These are certified for typhoon winds, is my understanding, which is the equivalent of a, of an Atlantic hurricane. So that is, I don't know, Mr. Martella, can you answer, like, what category hurricane or typhoon?
It's certified for a typhoon and a hurricane. We understand they're projecting winds as a result of this hurricane at around 22 meters per second sometime this weekend. We've seen those winds come through already. We have very high confidence that the turbines and the blades that have been installed, they will be very stable through these winds. We do recognize, and maybe I could, if I may, Chair, explain a little bit about the situation about the blade and where it is right now?
You know, I'm going to hold and let's, let's get through the questions for the federal folks, and we'll come back to that.
Thank you.
Toward the end of the meeting. Just so people know, I'm trying to get us through as much as possible and give the folks from the state an opportunity to talk about the impact on the marine life. So I'm going to ask, I'm just trying to manage time here a little bit, and maybe we'll take a few more questions, and then I want to move on and have the state folks that are here have an opportunity to talk about shellfish, because I know a lot of people in the room are curious about that as well. So I'm going to take Bruce Mandell online.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What we have heard so far this evening are some well-crafted statements that so far have not really answered our questions or concerns or addressed who amongst them is in charge of the response to this disaster. Our U.S. representative has called the effects this blade failure has had on our community a bump in the road. Many of us would disagree with that assessment, and I'm wondering if the select board might address that statement tonight. Which person, which single person who is either here tonight from these entities or who is at the top of the multi-agency food chain is ultimately responsible for the safety of our environment, our shores, our economy? And who specifically is responsible for inspecting these machines before they are placed into testing mode or ultimately placed into service? Can anyone here tonight answer about these issues? Thank you.
Okay, that's a series of questions, different, some of which have been asked, and I don't know whether you can supply any additional information. We talked about independent, I'm just going to reiterate what I've heard, an independent review of the blade, the analysis of the blades by Bessie on top of what's being done by GE. In terms of a single person, my summary is, there is no single person. There is a multi-agency, this is multi-agency with different areas and scopes of responsibility that all intersect together. It's very confusing and complex for us as a municipality to understand this. But Bruce, your question is a good one. My sense is, unless someone has a different answer to that question, who ultimately is We'd love that answer.
Mr. Mandell, thank you for the question. One of the things I think that you had brought up was, you know, kind of the inspections at the blade and federally, like, who kind of manages that process or reviews that process. So, you know, kind of just asserting again, Madam Chair, what you had said was, Bessie requires the accredited certification body to verify that a specific turbine meets those specific standards and requirements for the design, safety, and the performance. Additionally, we do require as well that LSE is a qualified independent third party provides the reports attesting to the sufficiency of the fabrication, including how the blade fabrication and quality checks were carried out and performed. I think to some of the continued questions of, you know, who really has the authority within this space, this probably is not the answer that you all want to hear, but it's kind of that Mr. Diamond had said. There is a shared responsibility depending on a specific time with the project. And so right now, of course, understanding that we are in the incident response, Bessie does have the authority to do those suspension orders and ensure that any sort of safety is taken into account. So Boem and Bessie do have shared responsibilities throughout different parts of the project. But for that incident right now, Boem and Bessie do have some of that shared responsibility. So I did just want to reinforce that.
No simple answers. Okay, Cliff?
Cliff Williams, Levitt Somerset Road. I can answer that question. I think it's the federal government and our state government is driving a narrative to solve a problem without developing the technology first. We're operating in a vacuum, right? So we just put it out there and hope it works. So as Matt said, how do you get these limits? I probably bore scoped more engines for United Airlines back in the 90s, setting standards on the Pratt-Woodie 2000. So I have a lot of experience for doing that, and it's not simple. It's like the chicken or the egg. So how do you know when the engine's going to blow up or when do you take it off the plane? So I could get into that, but I only have three minutes. I was just down in Oklahoma, going to training. I don't know why they keep sending me to training, but anyway. I went over to the radar division. I got a number from the obstruction department that you send in when you're going to put up windmills around an airport. I got ahold of that division, they gave me some information on the, on the radar, but most of it was for windmills 25 miles away. And we know now the windmills have encroached closer and closer, and I don't know if the studies have been done for that. But they definitely didn't have any information, and have asked for it before, a couple of years ago, for the ILS. The instrument approach for six goes out 18 miles, and the windmills are going to be 12 miles. So maybe one of us state reps can be the first one to fly the approach when the windmill gets really close. So I was just looking for that information. Do we have any of those studies?
So the question is about the impact on the turbines with airport operations and ILS? Is that, and who?
So the ILS goes at three degrees, it goes out 18 miles. So only recently, they just posted, the minimum safety altitude is 1,900 feet, but you don't capture the ILS. You capture it at 18 miles. You don't fly in to the 12-mile marker and then dive down and grab it. So that shows you that the bureaucracy of people who don't know what they're talking about just come up with solutions that aren't real. So my point is, the windmills, from the study they did show me from a company, the FAA, that we had to keep the windmills under 400 feet, at least out to 18 miles. But then I haven't seen the FAA do any study to back that up, and I didn't see any more information out of them that they're going to do that. So these windmills can't be crazy 1,600 feet with blades that haven't been tested, regardless.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cliff. I'm going to, I'm going to not have them to answer that question because I'm trying to focus on the incident. I realize we have bigger questions about wind. I realize we have bigger questions about wind as a community, for sure. So, all right, we are at 7:18. I have a few hands up online. How many people in the room want to ask a question? If you could just raise your hand so I have an idea. Okay. So I'm going to take those four questions, and I'm going to take four hands online, and then we're going to finish this part of the federal part and then go to the marine environment and shellfish and fisheries. So Pete and Andy, I don't know who stood up first, sorry.
Go for it, man.
Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you. Is this on?
Yeah.
Madam Moderator, members of the board, thank you. Andy Lowell, I'll first ask you as the board and me as Chairman of the Harbor Shellfish Advisory Board. We had our meeting last night. This is on our agenda. We'll be keeping it on our agenda as long as this is a current activity.
Andy, are you talking about shellfish?
Well, I'm going to just clarify what I tried to request two weeks ago was, and what I'm hoping and what the board is hoping as far as water quality testing in the harbor.
Okay, that's the second part. Hang on, we'll get to you, okay? We're talking about federal, the regulation and the impact at the federal level. We have a lot of information about at the state level and water quality coming.
Right.
Just hang in there.
So, well, I'm not going to ask specifics about the water quality. All I want to know is that are you giving our natural resources department, our town biologists, the full green light for water quality testing?
Well, that's the second half. Just hang in, okay?
Can I ask two questions as a resident?
If it relates to stuff under the federal purview. I don't know if you came late, but we're doing the federal stuff, and then we're going to do the marine stuff second.
All right, well, it's a couple of simple questions.
Okay.
You know, first of all, we all hear about takes, and we've witnessed a lot of marine mammal death over the past few years. I'm concerned if any takes have been recorded yet from this operation at Vineyard Wind One. And I'm also curious, now that we have some agencies and bureaus here, have you ever experienced the harsh environment that you have permitted these structures to be built in? And the reason I ask that, as a, somebody who's been in construction here on Nantucket for 40 years, it's a very harsh environment, and I'm simply curious, have you ever experienced this harsh environment and how that environment affects different materials at different times, whether it's temperatures, whether it's wind? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Andy. Does anyone want to answer that question?
Our Office of Protected Resources would be the party monitoring. In terms of this incident, I'm unaware of the debris having those interactions. We do have, like I said, an ongoing emergency consultation with Bessie, with Bohm, on monitoring, et cetera, and we have provided also recommendations for monitoring so we could actually be aware, including recommendations if there are dead animals to perform necropsies in the preservation of those samples done in a way that we can trust the data that comes in on it. That would be my response.
Okay. Thank you. Familiarity with the environment, anyone want to?
I'm a scientist, so my role in this process is understanding the interactions, not doing the regulatory review, not the engineering, but studying the interactions. And yes, I have experience going to see spending time on vessels, trial surveys for many years on Block Island, and we were out about three or four weeks ago in the South Fork Project, so thank you.
So, hang on, Pete. So there are several hands raised. I'm trying to keep it local. I'm going to ask Mike Jacobs, please, you know, just give us your connection to Nantucket. I'm sorry, I don't know you. I know a lot of the people, but I don't know everybody here. So I'm trying to keep it local here. Go ahead, Mike.
Hi there. Yes, I have fished Nantucket Shoals for years. I used to go up to Quincy. I'm an avid fisherman. I've done commercial fishing, and I just want to give some overviews. Number one, I love Nantucket. I have been there. I've been on the beaches.
Mike?
Yes.
Where are you from, please?
I'm from Long Island, New York.
Okay. Okay, we're keeping it local tonight. Thanks for, trying to chime in, but I'm going to, I'm taking questions from Nantucketers tonight. Thank you. Bonnie Brady, again, please identify yourself and where you're from.
Hi, can you hear me?
Are you with the Fishermen's Group on Long Island?
The Long Island Commercial Fisherman.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for coming on again. Please feel free to submit any questions in writing. We're taking calls from Nantucketers tonight. I feel like I'm on a radio show. So I'm going to have, I'm going to get Pete next, and then that Pete, one online, and then that Pete.
Thank you very much. Peter Burke, First Way, Nantucket. I'm here as a private citizen and not affiliated with any organization tonight. I had a really quick question for our delegation from the federal level. Sometimes it feels like, because we are on an island with a small federal population by standards, we have a hard time getting federal attention, so here we are, the spotlight on us for all the wrong reasons, but while this permit, whether it's Bohm or Bessie, is in, you know, a pause work order, I've learned tonight that there may be a provision to change the conditions of the parameters, which I understand if safety parameters aren't met, there's a shutdown order. What I would like to see as a private citizen, which would make me sleep easier at night, is while the shutdown is in place, is there a provision that can be added where, should a second accident occur, the permit is revoked completely? So to the same point, if I drive my car into a tree enough times, I lose my license. If there's another failure, which I understand we're talking about a lot of measures to respond to accidents when they happen, which is very necessary, and there's a lot of hard work being done, moving forward, it's bad because it would technically require a second blade failure, but if something of this magnitude happened again, would Bohm or Bessie consider adding a provision that would revoke the permit to build turbines? And again, I'm not pro or anti-turbine, it's, I'm trying to find the right incentive for turbine construction to not fail. And right now, I've heard there's a zero tolerance, which I would, you said there's no acceptable level of risk. To me, that means zero tolerance, which would mean, okay, we can say if it happens again, no more building. I'm not, again, not anti-building. I just want to make sure that, I'm anti-trash in the ocean. So that's my question for the federal delegation would be, would you consider adding that provision?
Thank you. Is anyone?
Thank you for that question, Pete. I think for us, we want to make sure that we have all the information that we can before we commit to any sort of changes within the terms and conditions at this time, but we absolutely will take that feedback, and we'll circle back with the Select Board on any changes and any adjustments and edits that are made. But thank you for that recommendation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Diane Coombs online, and then you'll identify yourself when you come up. I don't remember. Go ahead, Diane.
Hi, Brooke, how are you? I've sat on this committee for the HDC, and when we had meetings and I attended the whole bunch over the four years that I was on the committee, Bohm and all the associate industries never had an answer to what I specifically questioned them on. They said, well, we don't know. We'll call back. We'll get you next time, but don't talk about it. So it was done, as far as I'm concerned, it was done, the meetings were done, and the results were done in secrecy. This should have been published and held on Nantucket so everybody on this island could see what was going to be done, what was suggested. Nobody listened to our suggestions, not even the town lawyers who sat there. It is shocking. They didn't know what they were doing. You don't go out and build a house that's going to fall down before you get out the front door, and that is what they've done, and nobody is stopping them. I've listened tonight. They all say, when we do this, when we do that. I don't think that another meeting should be accepted. The town should fight to have every other meeting from now on done on an open board so everybody can understand and listen to what's being said and not accepting their decisions which are not made with any concern that we have. Otherwise, they never would have approved a thing as disastrous as these turbines for Nantucket without so much more study. They've all talked about the trash that's come around Nantucket, but they didn't add the trash they found in Martha's Vineyard, New York, New Jersey, Rhode Island. It isn't just us, it's the whole part of this east coast, which is a busy, busy east coast. So that's all I have to say. It needs to be changed, and we have to stand up and get them to change it so we know what's going on, not just their reports. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. Go ahead, and Pete, I did say Pete first. I'm going to get to both of you, so Pete, you want to go?
Good evening, Madam Moderator and rest of the board. I was at the last meeting. I had to go, I was unaware of it.
Pete, just say your full name for the record, please.
Pete Kazer. I run a charter boat here. We do salvage work for the Coast Guard, for the town. I used to be a pilot spotting fish. Local, I've been here for 50 years, I guess.
We know, it's just for the record.
So anyway, just, this gentleman here, you're a scientist, right? Okay, so I just want to clarify something, and I've checked with a lot of different whale people. The whole thing about the increase in whales that came up, why possibly? So they hang their hat on ship strikes, okay? Never has there been this many ship strikes of whales. The one thing that did happen originally when they were surveying, they were using the seismic air guns. So they're mammals, were mammals. I just got to relate to, I dove for scallops for 35 years. One year, I blew an eardrum, cold water. I didn't know which way was up, which way was down. Hit the inflation, you come to the surface, and you're just there. Now, there's been a lot of talk about these seismic air guns, they're a mammal, blowing the tympanic membrane over the eardrum, and what would they do? They would come to the surface, and it's not going to heal in the water. I've talked, I've tried to reach out to a lot of people, organizations, nobody can explain it. So when they say necropsy, they say by the time they get to the beach, everything is so decomposed that they can't tell. But anyway, I just wanted to put, I don't know, maybe you can help us out at some future point, but as far as all the whale people I know, nobody can back that up. So there's just the thing about the ship strikes. This has got, I just got to say it. This has got the fox watching the chicken coop all over it. You know, when we talk about, let's have some proof about, you know, guidance and overseeing, people that are going to monitor it. It's not a third party. Most of it is funded by the windmill people. So let me just riddle off a couple of little things. As far as the oil response goes, I don't know who you have as an oil response team. Is it a local group? They need to have a professional, like, resolved marine as a group that, I think they've engaged with them, I'm not sure if it's for oil response, but they need somebody that, a boat on site all the time that could deal with this stuff, not just do a little, you know, trial in there now and then. Again, the third parties should be used for a lot of this monitoring.
Okay.
Another thing that's funny, one second, a local boats.
Pete, excuse me. We have a three-minute time limit.
Pardon me?
We have a three-minute time limit for public comment, and you're at three minutes.
I asked a question.
Thank you.
Why weren't local boats and local pilots used for monitoring all of this stuff?
Okay.
No response?
Pete?
Yeah.
That's it. Three minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
I wish I was here before. But anyway.
Yeah.
Again, all I can say is this has got the fox watching the chicken coop.
Thank you.
All over it. And they need to deal with it.
Point taken. Thanks. Appreciate it. Yeah. There's a gentleman who was ahead of you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Christopher Lozon. I'm actually from the town of Barnstable, but I did take a boat over here today so I could make some comments, if that's okay. I'll keep it brief. I'm also a state senate candidate for the Cape and Islands District against Julian Seer, so I just came over to make a couple of comments.
Okay, we're not here for political campaigning tonight, I'll be honest with you.
Campaigning, I'm here talking to residents and came over to make some statements.
Go ahead.
So I'll keep it brief.
We have a three-minute time limit.
Yes.
Okay.
In Barnstable, we're also dealing with the impacts from this, with the cable landings through our beaches and substations that are being put up, so this is a regional issue. I know you guys are dealing with the debris right now directly, and I think everything that's come up since this blade turbine failure really has underscored the fact that this is being forced upon our communities by the state and federal government, whether we want it or not. And the agencies that are here tonight, I don't fault them, they're doing their jobs, but again, we're not getting any good answers on any of these things because it's a federal and statewide mandate that's going to happen, going to move forward, whether the local municipalities want it or not, and that's been stated time and again. So I think that that is unacceptable, frankly, and I do think it's unacceptable that our state and federal delegations are not here. You know, the state senator was here briefly for a statement, but is not engaging with the constituents, and I think that's unacceptable, frankly, because we need answers on all of these things, and we deserve better here on Nantucket and across the Cape and Islands because, again, the entire region is dealing with this right now, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. This is the first project, it's a single-blade failure. As significant as it is, this is a minimal-impact event. You could have several blades fail, you could have oil spills from these turbines or substations because there are fluids in these as well, and they're talking about significantly more turbines all across the Cape and Islands, so I just wanted to make those points. I think everyone here made a lot of good points tonight, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I had identified people that I was going to hear from, the last of whom will be Megan Perry online, and then we're going to move on to the marine environment and shellfish, and my appreciation to the state folks for hanging in with us. So go ahead, Megan.
Hi, for the record, Megan Perry, I do live in Nantucket, so thank you for taking my call. I'm sure many of you do know I live here. Quick question, I'd be super grateful. I'm wondering how NOAA or the NMFS can be stewards if it's allowable for a marine mammal take? It's hard to be good stewards if you're condoning killing endangered species, so just wondering how that happens. And then in terms of the effects on the marine life, I remember as a kid, and even toddlers grasped this concept, not to bang on a fish tank. And so I struggle with any of the science and the data. You can make arguments either way, but I think we all know if you bang on a fish tank, it's bad for the fish. If we're pounding these things into the seafloor, I don't see much of a difference in pounding on a fish tank. So those are my comments and questions. Hope to hear back from somebody. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Megan. Okay, so I don't know if anyone wants to attempt to answer first question, or it feels a little rhetorical, but we can, so, okay. So now we are going to invite the folks who, from the state, who have expertise in marine life and water quality to give us some updates on their efforts in terms of water quality. They have been working, so someone asked a question, Andy, I think, asked a question about engagement. about engagement with the local Natural Resources Department, and indeed, there is active engagement between state, federal, and the Natural Resources Department on analysis and understanding of what happened, so please go ahead, Wendy.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair and the Select Board. My name is Wendy Higer-Bernays. I'm the Chief of Research at the Office of Research and Standards at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. I'm a toxicologist and a health scientist by training, and for the past 30-plus years, I have worked on exposures to contaminants in the environment and associated health and environmental risks. So I'm here to speak to the evaluation that we have done at the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection on the impacts of the Vineyard Wind Project blade failure. So Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection includes water quality experts, includes ecology experts, chemists, toxicologists, and risk assessors. We reviewed the Arcadis report, we reviewed the material safety data sheets that were provided us by GE. We understand that these are initial documents, these are initial pieces of information, and that additional information will be provided. That will be particularly important to address longer-term impacts of the failure. With that said, we recognize the importance of sharing the information that we have, all the information that we have. As I mentioned, we reviewed the MSDS sheets, we've evaluated relevant peer-reviewed literature, we've discussed in-house with our experts, we've communicated with others and coordinated in different areas, and based on this review, our initial findings are threefold. One, what you already know is the physical debris in the area of the release of the blade, and that that results in physical hazard, those are physical hazards and risks to boaters, swimmers, surfers. You also know that the fiberglass, the fibers are sharp when they land on the beach areas and on the other shores, and that is known. Second, it is very unlikely that there is any significant risk to people who come into contact, or to people or aquatic organisms from direct exposure to chemicals from that debris, and that is attributed to that incident. And thirdly, it is unlikely that any hazardous materials associated with the turbine would be detectable in the ocean waters because of the dilution as a result of the currents and the tides. With that said, we know that water quality is a very important matter and concern to the town. Mass DEP, in coordination with your chair, the Select Board Chair, we have offered up the expertise that we have to support the town in this area. We've met with the town to discuss potential approaches to water quality studies, to assess the impacts of the turbine blade failure, and we stand ready to offer further assistance to review or scope a study or evaluating its findings, if the town should find that helpful. And with that, I'll turn over to my colleague from the Division of Marine Fisheries to speak to the concerns regarding the marine impacts and the shellfish. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Select Board. Yes. I should be used to this time by now. My name's Christian Pedapass, or Chrissy Pedapass. I'm an Assistant Director and the Shellfish Program Leader at the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, and I'm here to speak to the best of my ability to any potential impacts to some of the marine resources, living marine resources of Nantucket's waters, and particularly to concerns related to shellfish. The Division of Marine Fisheries is the state agency that is responsible for managing all of our marine, living marine resources. We try to do so in balance with nature such that we are managing sustainable fisheries that are able to support diverse shellfisheries, fin fisheries, just utilize our resources in a manner that, you know, allows the next generation to take advantage of it. And, you know, it's a balancing act in terms of allowing harvest and also allowing the resource to thrive and be sustainable. We also, you know, support the coastal culture that is enriched by the ability to go out and harvest our own healthy seafood. So we definitely work with the Nantucket Department of Natural Resources and the Shellfish Constable to manage recreational and commercial shellfishing on the island. My specific area of expertise is in harmful algae. I studied the phytoplankton that can cause biotoxins and potentially contaminate the shellfish and threaten public health. But I've also trained a couple of Nantucket staff, natural resources staff, to do so. And, you know, Nantucket Natural Resources Department is very proactive. It's one of the most proactive municipalities in the state in terms of research on their natural resources. I think it's among the few in the state that actually do your own phytoplankton monitoring to take a look for, you know, biotoxin-producing phytoplankton that could contaminate your shellfish, so I commend that. But outside of my area of expertise, I spent nearly five years as your town's shellfish classification biologist, so I'm pretty well acquainted with your waters. I went out with your Shellfish Constable, J.C., and I did all the water quality sampling to ensure that the waters from a microbial perspective are safe for shellfish to be harvested and consumed. As I mentioned, DMF manages the shellfish in the state, and we do so in conformance with the National Shellfish Sanitation Program. This program is a cooperative program between all the states, particularly shellfish-producing states, the industry, and also the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, and this program basically sets the standards for safety of shellfish entering interstate commerce. Microplastics and other contaminants of emerging concern such as PFAS are beginning to be evaluated for implications to shellfish safety and sanitation, but only just beginning. We do know that microplastics and fiberglass have been found in shellfish, fiberglass particularly around active boatyards, and it's well documented that they do enter the marine food chain, particularly in the filter-feeding shellfish. And this, these observations really started to come about a decade ago, so it'll be difficult to really assess the impact of these additional contaminants produced by this incident from the background. But this community is actually, as I said, very proactive in research, and you actually do have some background on microplastics. There was a study that found that, in fact, pretty much all of your shellfish has microplastics in it, and so the challenge there is that we know that the microplastics are everywhere. Pretty much everywhere scientists are looking, whether it's the human body, microscopic organisms, fruit, we're finding microplastics everywhere. So the challenge is going to be discerning what this additional risk may be. And the fact is that the research and the science on the human health risks associated with microplastics and fiberglass, all these particles that seem to be entering all of our, you know, the biological organisms, our natural environment, is, it's very, it's in the very early stages, so we don't have a very good understanding of what those, you know, human health impacts could be. The science is evolving. We currently have no public health standards or tolerance levels established for these contaminants, so it's very difficult to manage. So unfortunately, I'm here to give you another unsatisfactory answer as far as what the real risks are for this additional contamination load to your harbor, but what we can say is that, you know, we are consulting with the FDA shellfish specialists that evaluate our program. You know, we've also communicated with the Department of Public Health, particularly the Food Protection Program, they have the Climate and Environmental Health, the Bureau of Climate and Environmental Health, and just trying to get some guidance because I'm not an expert in what the risks really are around plastics and fiberglass and shellfish, but based on the info we have right now, we are not advising any behavioral changes in consuming shellfish. The debris has mostly been floating debris right now, and as far as the bioavailability for uptake in shellfish, my understanding is, you know, more weathering, breaking it down into smaller pieces may increase the risk, that's where the long-term monitoring will come in, and, you know, we'll continue to work closely with the Nantucket Natural Resources Department to help provide guidance on the additional monitoring of shellfish of water quality. As I said, we monitor the microbial quality of the water, so we're looking at bacteria, potentially viruses. Plastics and PFAS are not materials that we're actively, chemicals that we're actively monitoring, but we will continue to work with the Natural Resources, help guide as best we can the monitoring. We will also, you know, take the additional information that is received and evaluated for further study and communicate, ask for guidance with our FDA shellfish specialists, with the Department of Public Health, and should we believe that there is a critical public health risk in the future, we have the mechanisms in place to immediately close down the shellfish harvest. We do it all the time. You know, this community has experienced it after, you know, sewage spills, after heavy rainfall, so as soon as any of the specialists indicate that there may be a public health concern with consuming shellfish or any of our marine resources, we would certainly act to, you know, shut down harvest and communicate that to your community.
Okay, thanks, Chrissy. Okay, questions from the board for these folks? Just, yeah, just for the community's information that our Natural Resources Department is looking into both doing independent water quality monitoring and testing, as well as analysis of shellfish samples that were collected before the incident, and that were at the lab for other testing purposes, and they're probably gonna put in some additional testing protocols. So we do have, interestingly, some baseline stuff because so much work is done here already, and so, and then also advice and counsel in terms of peer review of GE and Vineyard Wind's environmental study is forthcoming as well, so those are the areas that, of support we're getting, and the activities that we're doing locally as well. So are there any questions from the board on this, any public questions on this area of what we're talking about? It's awful quiet. Oh, okay. So, Dan, are you gonna, are you coming down? He's following the rules from last week of using this mic, thank you.
My name's Dan Prock. I think everybody knows me. I'm a commercial fisherman here, I've made my living loss to fishing for 40 years. My questions for the DMF people and for the federal people regarding what Andy was talking about, about the takes, why aren't any of these whales that have been recovered counted as a take permit? I know you can't put your finger on it, who did it, but why is the fishing industry, if there's ever an entanglement, we get chastised and dragged through the streets and burned at the stake, but yet these numerous whales that have continued to wash up over the years since the seismic testing started, the cannon started? I've seen it all down there, I've been fishing down there for a long time, and I've seen all the stuff that goes on down there, and yet, nobody can come up with a definitive answer on why these whales have died, but if they had a piece of rope draped over them, fingers pointed right away. My other question is, why are the agencies that are doing these necropsies not sharing their information? Because I haven't seen anything about any reports on how they've died, other than like, it's been mentioned, a ship strike. They get disorientated, they come to the surface, they get picked off. If they float into a buoy of mine or somebody else's, we get charged for it. And then my last point is, the majority of these-
Hey, Dan, just to speak through me.
All right, well, the majority of these agencies have all accepted money from Big Wind, so anything in my eyes that has been said from the people at these organizations, NOAA has, National Marine Fisheries has, DMF has, is that a conflict of interest or not? Because money talks, and follow the science, follow the money. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Anyone wanna address any of those questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dan, for your questions, and thank you for being part of our seafood economy and providing food for us, delicious food, and I appreciate your concerns, the difficulties associated with managing marine mammals. This is, I'm not trying to punt, but I'm punting, there's another part of our fisheries that, this is what they do day-to-day in terms of the take authorizations, that's the Office of Protected Resources, and we can get back to you. I do know, in terms of the science, there are studies that are happening that are not funded by developers, not, it's studies not funded by nymphs, actually, that are looking at the interactions of these animals with offshore wind development. Some of these studies are happening in southern New England. It's, the other thing I will observe, and you mentioned, it is very difficult to determine from an injury on one of these animals unless you have a picture of the animal on the ship, which we have seen in some instances, like, what is, you know, what is the cause and the source, but this, it's a tragic, anytime these animals, I know you, fishermen I work with every day, you know, these, no one wants to see these animals hurt, especially the fishing industry, so I appreciate your concerns. The questions of these interactions are important to us, and we'll continue to explore and look at what these impacts are, and we can follow up with our Office of Protected Resources relative to those questions about the status of takes associated with these projects. The science of these interactions are, is developing, there is some new recent publications looking at the cause of some of these unusual mortality events. So I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
You didn't use your three minutes, so I'm gonna let you do it. Come right here.
My last question is, why is it that all these offshore wind companies have been issued take permits for whales that are on the endangered species list? There's different levels of harassments, but there's also take permits. And my industry doesn't get a take permit. We get one, we're all done. Those guys have been issued, everybody's seen them, stacks of take permits. Thank you.
So I'm gonna, Dan, would you email that question to communications@nantucket-ma.gov? I think it's a question we can pursue and answer on, because I think we've heard that it's a different-
Communications-
communications@nantucket-ma.gov, and that goes for every, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public comment portion on Vineyard Wind, I'm gonna close this agenda item now. I wanna thank everybody. Roger, did you wanna give us an update? Sorry, I did promise Vineyard Wind and GE an opportunity to give us a little update on status at the end, so go ahead.
Chair, I don't mean to extend the meeting, but I heard some comments, I thought there might be some helpful updates, or at least relevant updates, I think, to the community and the Select Board on three themes I heard tonight. The status of the blade and the removal, the follow-up action on the scans and the corrective action, and as well as the environmental side, so I can try to be really brief, but I think-
That'd be great. Brief would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I'll be very brief. So on the status of the blade, the- I'll be very brief. So on the status of the blade, the, the community is correct, there are still parts of the blade that are remaining on the turbine. Our focus of, of priority is there's a part that's still hanging. We estimate it to be about seven to eight percent of the mass of the blade. And we've been executing operations with safety first and foremost to, to try to do that in the safest way possible and then take the next step. Tomorrow, we're gonna be, we're gonna try, weather permitting, execute the next operation to get at that remaining seven to eight percent. There's another part on the top that's not a risk to debris in the ocean. We're focusing on what's a risk to debris in the ocean. So we're gonna work to execute that tomorrow, weather permitting. We got a question about the storm. I think as I addressed, the, the storm is not a risk for the turbines or the blades or anything like that. If, if that seven to eight percent of that hanging part is still there, there is a possibility that the 22 meter per second projected winds could impact that. And then we would execute the, the recovery plans that we've been doing. If that doesn't happen, then we would be looking at some, the next step, which would be, involve some technicians and physical cutting. There was a question about Resolve Marine. They are involved and they're engaged. So that's where we stand on the remaining part of the blade right now. Clearly a priority to address that because when we address that, we address the risk of the debris and the risk to the ocean. We got some questions about the corrective actions. We talked in the last meeting about these ultrasound scans and we are proceeding with those. We have eight, over 8,000 scans per blade that we look at. Every hundred millimeters, we have, we have a very detailed blade and we've upped the staff. We have about, I think, 25 technicians now going through these and have started to do that. But I wanted to share two important updates because when I was here last time, two weeks ago, we were focused on these ultrasound blades. We still are. But we're doing two additional things to look at the, the confidence level with the blades that have been installed, that are in the marshaling harbor that are coming. One is going from that desktop exercise to physical inspection. So we have something called a rover. It's a, it's a drone that goes inside the blades, blades basically on wheels. It focuses on eight to nine priority places. It takes scores of pictures, it takes videos. And so we will analyze for every single blade that's been installed, that's in the marshaling harbor, that's going up, using this rover. And it looks at a variety of factors, not just glue and adhesive. So that will be a physical inspection of all the blades. So we've added that and we're adding a third corrective measure here, which is using fiber optic sensors that can detect stress. And using these fiber optic sensors as the blades are rotating with an algorithm, we believe will have several hours to even days of notice of anything like this ever recurring. So we have three corrective measures now. Last time I spoke about one. The last thing I just want to update is quickly on the environmental assessment. We appreciate our colleagues from Massachusetts sharing those updates. We agree with them. What we've shared is an initial assessment. We stand by the initial assessment, but I don't want that to imply that's the end of the story. As we indicated last time, we are committed to go to the next steps and that's what we've been doing with Arcatis. We're going to be focusing on shellfish. We're going to be focusing on marine life. We're going to be focused on long-term degradation of anything that might remain, the impact from physical contact, the impact from chemicals, the impact from micro particulate principles. And we'll be, you know, working, we've been working with Nantucket DNR, we've been working with Massachusetts. We have Arcatis on the phone. But I just want to just reinforce, we're not ruling everything out. We're ruling everything in at this point and we'll continue to be transparent and sharing with you and our other stakeholders, the work that Arcatis is doing there to do this fuller study as well. So thank you for the chance for me to share those updates. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions from the board at this point?
No.
Okay. All right. Terrific. Thank you very much to everybody. This closes this agenda item.
Can I make a couple, one more quick comment before we close?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a couple things. I don't, I don't think this is a blip. I view this as a, as a warning to all of us. I don't think this is just a blip and, you know, that, so that's just one question. And then the other thing I would hope that the Bessie and Bohm, et cetera factor in is the scale of this. There's plans to be 1,000 plus out there and these industries, they'll all probably hire the same people to do their monitoring, to do, go out and take care of a spill, et cetera. But I think you have to make sure they have, that we have the capacity, they have the capacity to handle this. If there is multiple, you know, this is one little thing that happened really in the scale of this. And I think one thing you should be thinking about is, what if there's more than just, you know, one blade from one turbine when there's 1,000 plus turbines out there? You know, how is that going to be handled? Who's going to handle it? You know, how can you ensure that we are, you know, safe and protected? I think that's, I kinda, I'm looking at it from the macro perspective and I hope that we don't just go away and say, this is okay and we took care of it and, you know, our shellfish is okay. But then, you know, five years, 10, 15 years, have something really serious happen. I, I think that's the concern that I'm hearing from people is that this is, you know, people are very concerned. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Chair, could I make one comment?
Sure.
I know it's late.
Yeah. We still have, we still have a lot of business to conduct, everybody.
I know, but I just wanted to thank the ladies and gentlemen from the various federal agencies who are here. I know it's tough and this is probably not, you'd figured you were going to be doing when you took the job. I would have liked to have seen a couple levels higher though, the people that are really making the decisions and I'm disappointed they're not here. And I just may add the comment, I'm disappointed that we've never seen, never seen any of our federal elected officials on this island. If there'd been an oil spill, they would have been here in a heartbeat with their cameras. I'm disappointed with them and I'm disappointed that we really haven't had a decision maker or anyone here that's really in charge. Thank you.
Thanks, Malcolm. Anybody else? Okay. Thanks, everybody. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You should let us know how to find the list. This is the third week that you're saying you have a list of questions that we can find the answers.
It will be up, it will be up in the next few days. It's being crafted as we, literally as we are speaking, it's being crafted. So, thank you.
And you really should have asked the federal people or allowed me to ask what changes they're making to Revolution Wind because that is ongoing and it's right now and we're at risk and they have all of the same oil spill problems.
Okay, excuse me, please. Thank you. Okay. Okay. So appreciate all the input again. Encourage the community. If you have additional questions, email them to communications@nantucket-ma.gov. And I'm going to give my, our state and federal folks leave to head out and to their travels home with appreciation for, for coming tonight and taking our questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Moderator. I've been doing that a couple of times tonight.
I noticed. I thought maybe you wanted my job. I'm happy to turn it over.
Yeah, no. Sarah, we're having a hard time here. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Uh-oh.
Get closer to your microphone. Yep. And I'm going to ask people, please, to take any conversations to the hallway. This meeting continues. This board has work to continue with tonight. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. So we have asked the moderator to do a little presentation about, Pete Kizer? Thank you. To do a little presentation about town meeting process and procedure as a way to help the community understand what to expect at the September, well, at all town, town meetings, but particularly given that we have a special town meeting coming up on September 17th. So Sarah, I'm going to let you take it away. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me better now?
It's not great.
Not really?
Honestly, it's not great.
Charles, can you try to turn up Sarah when she speaks?
Because I'm up as high as I can go.
That's a little better.
Okay. That's a little better. We'll all just stay very quiet here. Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm sure this is really what you want to hear about tonight. So I'll try to be quick. Town meeting. Honestly, you should read town meeting traditions and procedures. It's available on the town website. It's amazing how many questions are answered in that short little document. I find that when people ask me questions, I can almost always point to some section of that document to answer it. But let me just try to give you an overview. You know, town meeting is by nature a messy process. It's the legislative branch of our town government. So it's intended to be a debate, a discussion, changes being made, sometimes on the fly. I know that is sometimes difficult for people, but that's really how the legislative process works. And that's why I have to allow amendments. It's not like a ballot question where you can just go in and vote yes or no. The point is to come to the meeting, hear what people have to say. Sometimes your mind is changed, sometimes it isn't. But the more prepared you are when you come into the meeting, the better off you're going to be. One of the confusions that people seem to have involves the difference between the warrant articles and the motions. So the first thing that happens in this process is that the warrant, with all the warrant articles, is published. And those warrant articles aren't intended to be the full legislation or even fully thought out and, and drafted. Those articles are really the notice to the public as to what is going to be discussed at the meeting. What we vote on and what we discuss are motions that are made on those articles. And for the, there's a couple of ways those motions come up. One way is through the public hearing process, either with the planning board or the finance committee. And then the finance committee publishes its report. And that's the document that we use at the meeting. We call it the warrant, but it really is the finance committee's report with its recommendations and the planning board's recommendations published in the form of, of motions. My job is to make sure that those motions are within the scope of the article. Now, what does scope mean? Scope means was, is the motion related sufficiently to the subject matter in the article so that someone who's sitting at home, who chose not to go to the meeting, would not be surprised that something was being discussed? So for example, if you say, I want to change the zoning for a particular piece of property in town, I could only allow a motion that related to that particular property. I couldn't allow a motion that related to five or six properties in town because people would not have had adequate notice that those properties were going to be under discussion. For monetary articles, if it says, we're going to spend $1 million for something, I can entertain a motion up to $1 million, $800,000, $500,000, $1 million, but not $1,500,000 or $1,000,000 or even $1,500,000 because that would not be within the scope of the article. People sitting at home understand that we're going to spend up to $1 million on this particular thing, not anything more than that. The other way that motions come in is when proponents of an article aren't happy with the recommendation that the finance committee or planning board has made. So for example, if you're, if you put in an article and the finance committee doesn't think it's a good idea and they give you a motion not to adopt, you still have the ability to come to the meeting and present your motion. And it's usually in the form of a positive motion and it has to, again, relate to the subject matter of the article. Experience has taught us that that's a very difficult road to travel unless the motion mirrors the, the text of the article or unless you get the, you get the text of your motion out to all of the voters in writing ahead of time so that people have a chance to look at it. If people come into the meeting and there's some complicated motion that they haven't been able to read and understand and I'm just showing it on the screen, reading it and scrolling through it, we only have the capability to show so much on the screen at any one time. Chances are, your, your motion is going to, is going to fail because people aren't going to be able to take that in, understand what you're doing and vote in favor of it. I mean, it's kind of a, it's kind of common sense, I suppose. So what else can I tell you? There are other things that are kind of simpler, like amendments that come up that are just, I want to add an "and" or I think there's a word that's missing and let's insert that or let's make a correction. Those are, those are simp, those kinds of amendments are simpler. It's always good to have the amendments ahead and in writing, but I don't have, I don't have the ability to say, I'm not going to take any motions or amendments that I haven't had in advance in writing. The process would simply grind to a halt if, if I did that. And then there are certain motions that are just made on the fly, like motions to move the question or motions to refer to a committee. Those are things I think that people need to have the freedom to bring up at the, at the time. So are there specific questions or things that you wanted me to talk about that are confusing or that I could be helpful in explaining?
Tom has, Tom has one for you.
Sure.
Good evening, Madam Moderator. A quick question for you. I know something that came up last, after the last go-around with the STR articles and all that was a motion, the idea of a motion to reconsider. And I was just wondering if you could maybe kind of fill in again what the protocol, the proper protocol for a motion to reconsider would be?
Okay. Our practice has always been that a motion to reconsider has to be ta, has to be made at the time of the original vote. And that means that you have to make the motion to reconsider before we've moved on to other business. That's number one. And I always try to make, if I, you know, I always try to give time in between ending one article and moving on to the next article in case there is going to be a motion to reconsider or in case there's some other, there is some other issue. A motion to reconsider has to be made by a person who voted with the majority. So if on a particular vote, it didn't go your way, you're, you're not, what's the word? You're not qualified or you're not allowed to make the motion to reconsider. The only people who can make a motion to reconsider is someone who voted with the, with the prevailing vote. So let's say we had a vote to ban ice cream and that passed. If you voted against that ban, you, you can't vote to reconsider. But if you voted for the ban and then you suddenly think, well, wait a minute, oh, I may not like ice cream, but a lot of people do, we should probably revisit that, then you are entitled to make a motion to reconsider. That motion requires a two-thirds vote, so it's a very high bar to pass. I can't think of a time that we've had a motion to reconsider that's, that's actually been adopted. But if it were adopted by a two-thirds vote, then we'd go back to debating the article and then eventually have another vote on it. So the, having a motion to reconsider adopted is just the first hurdle in the process. I guess I should also mention the difference between the, this, probably what I would consider three different types of amendment because I think people get confused about that as well. So there are these things that we, we call technical amendments. They're, they're not always technical, but that's just what we call them. And those are amendments... And those are amendments that come up after the warrant has been published. So what happens is, you know, the, the warrant's published, the finance committee has hearings, the planning board has hearings, they make their recommendations. Those recommendations are placed in the finance committee report and those, that report then published and sent to the voters. If between the time that that report is published and the time that of the meeting, it's found that there was a mistake or sometimes, you know, the, the finance director will start adding up the math and he'll find that the numbers don't match or words have been left out or something happens where there's new information and either the finance committee or the planning board holds, holds a meeting and changes its recommendation. Those changes are to the motion and as long as they're within the scope of the article, they can be read into the record at the beginning of the meeting. And when that happens, when we get to that particular matter during the meeting, what we're voting on then is the, is the motion in the warrant as amended by that so-called technical amendment that I've read into the record. So that's one way that things get amended. The second way that things get amended is the so-called friendly amendment. And that's where someone gets up and makes a motion to amend and they suggest some wording and we type it out. And then someone else in the audience says, well, wait a minute, you didn't think about this? Would you agree to change this word? Or add this small concept? And if the person who made that amendment says yes, then we would just incorporate the suggestion into the amendment as a so-called friendly amendment. And then that's what would be voted on when the amendment was voted on. And then the third type of amendment is just your regular amendment when someone gets up and says, I want to amend the article by striking paragraph two. And the way the votes go, we don't vote on, we vote on, we don't vote on the technical amendments because those are changes that are made through a public hearing process. We don't vote on the friendly amendments because those are agreed to by the person who made the original amendment. We only vote on those kind of regular amendments. And we vote on those amendments first. They always require a simple majority. So if you vote in favor of it, that amendment's adopted. If you vote against it, the amendment isn't adopted. And then we go back to discussing the main motion. And the main motion is whatever motion is made at the beginning of the discussion on that particular topic. And then if it's adopted, then what we're talking about is the main motion as amended by the amendment. If the amendment isn't adopted, then we're just back to discussing the main motion. And the main motion, for the most part, is the motion that's printed in the finance committee report as its recommendation. And all of those motions, what, 99% of the time are positive motions so that when you vote yes, you're voting to adopt the motion and when you vote no, you're voting to defeat the motion. Every once in a while, and it's very rare, we have a negative motion and I try very hard to explain that because I think it's one of the most confusing things. When a yes vote is no and a no vote is yes. We almost never do that.
Thank you, Sarah. Really, really helpful. I'm sorry it's so late and our audience may be a little sparse at this hour, but one of the ideas is that this is now available as part of this meeting recording. And so people who are curious about town meeting process can go back. And maybe if, if you have other questions.
Yeah. Can I mention one other thing, Brooke?
Sure.
So time limits, that seems to be another source of, of some confusion, like what's the story with time limits? Well, first of all, and this is me, you know, so criticize me if you want. I'm, I'm a big girl. I can, I can handle it. I think it's hard for people to get up and speak at town meeting. And a lot of times people have things that they feel very strongly they want to say. So I try when I can to be a little flexible on the time limits. I know that frustrates people. But particularly if someone is making, making points and isn't rambling, I do try to let them finish what they have to say. The person who makes the motion, the main motion, gets five minutes to kind of set forth what they're trying to accomplish with their motion. That's the initial five minutes. If there's an opposition to that, that's organized, I try to give them kind of the same amount of time, five minutes. The next people who speak all get three minutes apiece. Except if you speak again, it's one minute. So I hope I'm saying that right. I think it is. So except if, for example, someone asks a question of a town, of town council or a town consultant who's come to the meeting specifically to address the meeting. I'm not as strict with town count, I'm not holding John Georgio to a minute or two minutes. I usually allow him the time that he needs to, to explain to the meeting whatever the question is because what's the point of having town council there if you're not going to allow the man to explain what he's come there to explain? I feel a little bit the same way with, with town officials, although you know, not, not always. It really depends. But if, I think one mistake that we should consider looking at is saying the town has an article that's very important that you say the select board has presented in the form of a motion. Sometimes it will be called, it will get a positive recommendation from the finance committee. It will be called by someone in the community who is opposed to it. A lot of times I ask if the town wants to take its five minutes to explain. And often that time is not taken and it's turned over to the person who's speaking in opposition. I think that's a missed opportunity because you're allowing the article to be spoken about in a very negative way right from the outset. And I think that that sets maybe the wrong tone. And that there should be somebody from either the finance committee, the planning board, the select board or town administration who stands up at the beginning and says, this is our article. This is why we are presenting it and this is why we think it's important. Then let the people start talking in opposition. But that's just my observation from where I'm up on the podium. And that's, that's just a suggestion for you all.
That's, that's something that Libby wrote in some notes during the last town meeting and shared with all of us. So I think it's, it's spot on. I'm having trouble concentrating though because you're trying to ban ice cream. And so I've just been hungry the whole time. I don't know what to say.
Well, I'm only banning ice cream, Matt, because I think I just ate a pint of ice cream in sheer frustration listening to that last presentation. So it's very much on my mind. I'm very sorry about that.
Thank you for your honesty, Madam Moderator. Any other questions or things that the board thinks that Sarah should address that you've heard from the community that are confusions around town meeting process? That might be helpful. Seeing none at 8:30. Sarah, thank you very much for hanging in with us.
Sure. Well, you, you know where I am if you ever, if you ever need me.
Terrific. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it is 8:30. Okay, Kristi Ferentzela. We're going to do a little quick amendment to the agenda. We are going to push her Affordable Housing Trust quarterly update. Again, we'll figure out when we can squeeze it in on a later agenda. But we do need to do item A under the Housing Office. Affordable Housing Trust requests for authorization of grant funding up to $450,000 to Housing Nantucket for the Lease to Locals program. Kristi, take it away.
Thank you. And thank you for moving the second agenda item before you tonight to request the authorization for a grant of $450,000 to Housing Nantucket for the purposes of the Lease to Locals program. This program was launched initially in 2023 under ACT NOW Community Initiatives with the partnership of Placemate. The program, which has been successful in other resort communities, provides a cash incentive to homeowners to convert their underutilized or short-term rented units into year-round housing. And to date, the program has unlocked 22 dwellings, providing year-round housing for 54 islanders. The initiative directly aligns with the select board's strategic goal of increasing year-round housing opportunities. The program began as a pilot under ACT NOW and Placemate to collect data to provide a proof of concept. Julia Lindner from ACT NOW will assist in transitioning this program over to Housing Nantucket and Anne Kuspa and her team. Julia, along with Colin from Placemate and Anne from Housing Nantucket, have come before the Affordable Housing Trust numerous times to present and ask for the additional support and funding for this, for this additional year. In your packet, you'll find the several presentations that they've made to the trust, which explains how the program has worked. Placemate's role in monitoring and vetting both tenants and homeowners, the questions and answers that were raised by the trust and the new program policies. I can say we've done a lot of homework on this program and really excited to see it move forward. At the July 9th meeting, the Affordable Housing Trust voted unanimously to provide a grant of up to $450,000 contingent on the select board approval with the following new conditions. The first is that tenants must income qualify to be receiving funds from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The income qualification is up to 175% of area median income, which is about $270,000 for a family of four. Second, there was a previous rent cap of $5,000, which is now being adjusted and based on the number of bedrooms. So there's rent caps per bedroom to make things more affordable. The third, the program funds are only for one year. Fourth, the recommendation was for blood relatives to be able to qualify as tenants if the conversion is from short-term rentals. And lastly, returning homeowners would be eligible for a 50% incentive based on the first year amount. If any of the current homeowners or tenants become ineligible under the new guidelines in place by the trust, Housing Nantucket will utilize private donations to keep the tenants in their current housing, making sure that this program does not impact any current housing situations. The program has been reviewed by town council and town administration. And upon this, there is a recommendation to remove the eligibility of a blood relative as a qualified tenant. This is something that Placemate has not done in other locations and actually was something that they were accommodating, accommodating the request of the trust. So I'd recommend removing that from the policy guidelines. So in your packet is the request to approve this grant agreement with an additional edit of the contract timeframe to be from September 1st of 2024 through August 31st of 2025. And I'm here to answer any questions. And I also have Colin from Placemate and Anne from Housing Nantucket online as well.
Any questions from the board?
I'll move, I'll move approval with the blood relatives removed. And I was going to ask about that, but since it's removed, I don't have to ask. So here's my, there's my request.
A second?
Madam Chair, a second for discussion.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to let my colleagues on the board know that just, just to echo what Kristi said, this came to the trust several times. We asked a lot of questions. I don't, my, my personal opinion, my gut tells me there was not a majority in the beginning on the board to vote it through until a bunch of questions were answered. I know Kristi and Brian put a lot of work into figuring this out with town council and how it could adapt from ACT NOW Community Initiatives into municipal structure. We talked about fair housing laws. We talked about all kinds of, we talked about AMI limits. Several things got, got worked out. I had questions on privacy that Kristi got answered through, through the CTO of the town. And so anyway, I just wanted to say to the, so my fellow board members that a lot of due diligence was done on this program and I think we, and I think Kristi got it to a really good, and the town got to a really good spot.
So is that a second?
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That sounds unanimous. Great.
Thank you all.
Yeah. Thanks, Kristi, for, you get the, waited the most hours of any staff in the last few weeks. Thank you. Okay, review and adoption of select board comments to September 17th special town meeting. Oh, there's nothing in the town manager's report. So now we're, do, do we have any comments that we want to add to the warrant? So since there are none, we don't need to take any action, right, Erica?
You just need to vote to adopt the warrant with the finance committee motions as contained in your packet.
Thank you very much. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Any committee reports at this late hour? Hint, hint?
No, just a quick, Coastal Resiliency had something this morning about Washington Street and downtown that was pretty well attended. They had it again tonight at the Welling Museum. And I thought it was, you know, people that were there that spoke to me were very excited about it. They said they thought it was really well done. And then the only other thing is, I think, I'll save it, I'll save it for, I'll save it for another night. Thanks.
Okay. Next up?
Hold your chair.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night. You need signatures? That's it, right?